All right. We are ready to go. Welcome, everybody, to the July 24th. Man, summer's almost over, huh? Twenty twenty four City v. Edina Planning Commission meeting on behalf of the rest of the planning commission. We're excited you're here, whether in person or tuning in remotely. I say it every time, but your curiosity, your participation, and your feedback is vital to this process as we navigate change together here in Edina specifically regarding the ways in which we'd like to use our land. So we have one public hearing on the agenda tonight, a site plan review and zoning ordinance amendment, 7200 France Avenue. I'll get into the specifics on what to expect when we get to that portion later. You heard some details as we first began, but you can hold tight, no problem. For those who are new, I'll give you a rundown of what to expect tonight. We'll start with a call to order, then roll call, followed that by an approval of tonight's meeting agenda, followed by the previous meeting minutes. We will then have the community comment period. As noted, this is your chance for those who are here in person to speak about a matter not on tonight's agenda. After that, we have the public hearing, which is the portion of the meeting where you have the chance to speak about that matter on tonight's agenda. And then we have one report and recommendation after that, and that is one of our commission work plan items, areas of potential change. We have Commissioner Miranda, who will present on that. That'll give you a flavor of kind of what we are up to behind the scenes, and tonight's meeting is when we kind of react and apply the code. After that, we have chair member comments, followed by staff comments, and then adjournment. It's important to know that any and all feedback makes its way to us, and we consider it as we make recommendations for approval or denial tonight. We do so most prominently through our engagement website, www.bettertogetheideina.org. If you're unfamiliar with that, that is the best catch-all for any potential and current development that may or may not be happening around your neighborhood. There are new features on that as of, you know, the last year, including kind of a map that has a development tracker so you can better see what's closer to home. Without further ado, we'll get into the meeting. Thank you for being here. Call to order. And then roll call.
Commissioner Alkire.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Here.
Commissioner Felton.
Here.
Commissioner Honneman.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Second.
I'd like to amend the agenda.
Okay.
So I'm going to postpone postpone the report and recommendation on areas of potential change until the next until the next meeting because we had a lot of progress today, the past 24 hours, but that we needed to have that was still not finished. So I think it'd be better to have it at the next meeting.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So with that proposed amendment, do we have a new second?
Motion. Well, do we need a new motion and a new second, or did he motion a nice second?
Well, I guess it'd be up to the person who made the motion. Do you accept that amendment?
I'd accept that.
So new second.
New se-
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved, great. All right, approval of previous meeting minutes on July 10th. Any proposed revisions, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from July 10th.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, next, as I mentioned, we have the community comment period of the agenda. This is your chance for any of you residents who are here in person to speak about a matter not on tonight's agenda. Similar to the public hearing, you have three minutes to do so. Come up to either podium, state your full name, address, and when the light turns green, you have three minutes. When it turns amber, you have 30 seconds left, and when it's red, your time's up, and we'll get out the hook and pull you off, and I'll just kind of, well, ask you to wrap up. Anyone here for a community comment period? We got someone, thank you.
My pleasure.
My name is John Carlson. Despite the advertising on my shirt, I am a resident of Edina. My grandchildren play baseball in Bloomington. Just a couple of quick comments that I want to make. First of all, in the Sun Current two weeks ago, a lady, and I can't remember her name, wrote an article about pretty much the Macy's site. And what the comment really was in the article is that it lackeded a wow factor. And I think that's important to keep in mind on every project that Edina looks at, whether it's real estate, or roadway, or parks, or whatever it is, there should be a wow factor in there that separates Edina from the other communities around us. The second item that I want to comment on. We'll have to wait until I can remember it. Well, I apologize, I am having a memory lapse here, so I will end my time early. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlson. All right, we got another. Thank you.
Hi, David Frankel, 4510 Lakeview Drive. I'm just wondering, you know, City of Edina hired a former Edina city councilperson for $80,000 to give recommendations on a pedestrian bridge over France Avenue between two sites, one being the Macy's site. None of the renderings for that site showed any pedestrian bridge, and I'm wondering, the developer mentioned in a presentation that they were making accommodations for this bridge, period. Accommodations is not a rendering. As you may be aware, pedestrian bridges, if you look at the one over Highway 100 on the Nine Mile Creek Trail, from indot standards, has to be 19 feet tall, and has to have no more than a 5% grade on each side's ramp. If you do some simple math, that's a long ramp, and I'm not sure where this would fit using my high-level looking at the current renderings, where this would fit. So I'm wondering why nobody asked that question? Nobody seems to ask 88 questions. Nobody asked it when they put up the bridge over the railroad tracks, the Grand View, and now that's in an investigation by the U.S. Department of Justice. Is this bridge heading in the same direction if it's built? I don't know if the city can afford two of those investigations. The other thing is, these meetings and studies seem to think crossing France Avenue via bicycle pedestrians is dangerous. Well, I crossed it a lot, and roads by bicycle or pedestrian inherently are dangerous, but I've never had a close call on that road, as opposed to many other close calls I've had elsewhere. But my point is, there are alternatives to spending 3 to 5, $10 million on a bridge. If you go over to City Minneapolis at Berry Parkway and Richfield Road, City Minneapolis implemented a couple of years ago a four-way stop for pedestrians and bikers. It works, simple, relatively inexpensive, the infrastructure's already there, it's a matter of implementing some software. So I would advise people, City of Edina, to look at that. Edina has to get out of the mentality of not invent it here. If we didn't think of it, it's not any good. City Minneapolis does a lot of innovative things, and it doesn't involve building bridges everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. We have a request, Berry and Richfield Road.
Thank you.
Would you like to come? Yeah, come finish, we'll give you another minute. Beth.
The first item that I brought up was to talk about the wall, wall factor, and it's kind of hard to say, what is the wall factor? You know, that's in the beholder's eyes, it's in the developer's eyes, but sometimes it's clearly visible. And when my wife Sandy and I are traveling around the Twin Cities metropolitan area, we quite often go through Wayzetta, and Wayzetta has the wall factor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, that article is discussed during some of our comments after the last meeting. Just a reminder to us all, too, to hold projects and our future to a high standard, as you mentioned. Mr. Frankel, you mentioned the percent grade for that potential bridge. We had a sketch plan for that that was, it wasn't televised, it was recorded in the community room, and we did bring that up. There was a couple options of a pretty circuitous route, or starting the bridge, or starting the descent quite a bit farther away, but it was discussed that they would have enough space, but that was a concern of how long it would take to get down at a 5% grade. So there's barely enough math to make it work, but we haven't seen many more details, as you mentioned, either, unless I'm missing something. All right. Thank you for those examples, it's a good reminder. Don't need to reinvent or invent the wheel. Anyone else here for a community comment? All right, let's move right into the public hearing. So what to expect for the public hearing? Staff puts together a report based off of what the applicant proposes. They consolidate that into a presentation, which we're about to see by Director Teague. We will then have an exchange, the planning commission and staff. After that, we allow the developer applicant to provide their own presentation, we'll have a similar back and forth. After that point, we'll open it up to the public hearing, and that's your chance as a community member to speak about this matter, whether in person or tuning in remotely. I'll give you some instructions to get in the queue to do so. After the public hearing closes, we bring it back to the commission, we deliberate, and then we make a recommendation for approval or denial. As far as the instructions, so if you are tuning in remotely, if you want to get ready to speak, it might be in a while, but at least you can be ready. Please call 312-535-8110, enter access code 26322058054. The password is 5454, and then when you'd like to speak, press star 3. Please, please state your full name and address before speaking. I will get back to that and remind you of those details when we open the public hearing, but now you can be prepared. And with that, take it away. Director Teague, thank you.
Thank you, chair members of the commission. This is a site that, well, maybe the more veteran members of the commission have been familiar with this over the years, dating back to 2018, I think, when redevelopment was first considered on the site. So it's located in the greater Southdale district on the west side of France. Guided in our comprehensive plan for office and residential use, so it's this light pink area west of France. It was also within the comprehensive plan, the area west of France is within the Southdale, the Southdale district plan, defined as a transition zone, transitioning from our greater density development areas within France and York, as the area, as it transitions into the low-density developments to the west, mainly single-family homes. So that was used as we did some rezoning and regiding of the site back to go back to 2019. What was approved for this site was a couple of six-story apartment buildings. There was 30,000 square feet of retail and some townhomes along the west side, the very west side of the property. That development never, it never took shape, they didn't do any of that development. So the current property owner came in a couple of years ago to, and that development was rezoned to PUD, the PUD 16 zone that exists on the site today. Current property owner came in and revised that PUD for a new plan. So that's the current zoning that's on the site today, and I'll show that here in a minute. So currently, the site sits vacant. There were previously office buildings on both the 7200 and 7250 site. So what was approved last year was an ordinance amendment to that PUD 16, and there was a final site plan approval given for the south property. That was to be a 124,000-square-foot office building. That has not been constructed, and the overall development plan showed this future development. Uses that were talked about in the traffic study was based on an apartment building, 150-unit apartment. There was also talk of a hospitality or a hotel on that site. So this is a look at the overall development plan that was approved for the site, so the existing zoning. Here's that office building that's not yet been constructed, and this was a rendering that showed kind of the outline of a future building on that site. So again, this is the overall site plan that was approved. The intention was, with this first phase, the office building, all of the landscaping, the north-south connector road, the sidewalks, that was all to be constructed as part of that first phase. So what's before you this evening is a proposal for, oh, I should back up. You may recall, I believe it was last year, the property owner came in with a sketch plan to consider a hotel on that site. Wasn't very well-received in the neighborhood, got mixed reviews at planning commission and city council. They've abandoned that idea, and they're proposing housing on the site. So no formal application came through with the hotel. So what's proposed this evening is 153-unit apartment. One of the parameters that was established within the existing PUD was a height limitation of 72 feet, and they do intend to meet that requirement. They also considered, or part of that original overall development plan contemplated 10,000 square feet of retail within this Phase 2 project. They've removed that from the proposal, so there's no retail proposed. Concerns have been raised from residents in regard to traffic, and in taking out the those, that retail space also reduces the need for parking. So that's not part of this request. So I'm going to just quickly move through some renderings and the development, the developer application will go into this in more detail. So this is a look at that wetland area that's on the west side. So we're looking from the single-family homes and duplexes that are located to the west. You see, the building would be five stories and then step back at the top. This is that east-west pedestrian connector through the site, again, a rendering from So this, the specific request this evening is for a site plan review and an ordinance amendment to revise that PUD 16 that would incorporate a final site plan for Phase 2, and also as part of that amendment, they're requesting a reduction in the first-floor ceiling height from 16 feet to 14 feet. The 16 feet, that was when we were, they were contemplating commercial. So because of the change to residential, they'd like to reduce that to 14, and it also helps them maintain that 72-foot height maximum. So just a quick review of the site plan. Again, here's that north-south street with the pedestrian sidewalks on both sides. Access into the building would be off 72nd here, and another access right here. This access point would be the low, the new resident move in or move out. So a truck would move in here, and all of the move-in would take place inside the building. Traffic and parking study was done as part of that original request a couple of years ago. StanTech did a review memo that's included in your packet to take a look at the current proposal. They conclude that there is adequate parking for the project, and the existing roadways can support this Phase 2. Ed Terhar was the consultant that did that, he's on the call with us this evening, should you have any questions in that regard. One thing I want to mention, and you may recall with that, with the previous approval for the site, that the first level of underground parking is for the office to the south. So they've added that parking in, and it's factored into the parking calculations. Again, full landscaping, that was all, it's basically the same from the overall development plan. Based on the perimeter of the site, they need 55 over-story trees, there are over 100 here. They are preserving some of the existing trees along the west line, west lot line that helps provide some of that landscaping and screening to the houses to the west. And the applicant has, I believe, has a materials board, and they'll go through the building materials as part of their presentation. The project is code compliant in terms of setback regulations to the PUD 16 standards, with the exception of that first-floor ceiling height. So the primary issue is the site plan consistent with the overall development plan, and is the ordinance amendment reasonable, specifically in regard to that reduction in the first-floor ceiling height? So just to touch on our pyramid of discretion, I didn't include it in the packet this time, but just as a refresher, with the ordinance amendment, the city has discretion to say yes or no, much more discretion. With the site plan review for Phase 2, which is really where we are this evening, is up in the least amount of discretion that the city has. So staff believes that, again, that is consistent with the overall development plan. Some of the findings that we've included, the 72-foot height restriction is met, the 50 units, 153 units with no retail generates less traffic and less parking needed. The existing roadways, again, and parking will support the project. While this isn't a vertical mixed-use, it is a mixed-use project with the two uses of the two sites, office and residential is consistent with the comprehensive plan. 19% of the site, within the site, would be this area here and the north-south street. It's all dedicated for the public, and if you were to include the easements that would be established along the fronts of the building, it's 38% of the total land area that's dedicated for public use. And we believe that that first-floor height is reasonable, it's similar to recent projects that have been approved. The Maison Green across the street is a 14-foot first-floor ceiling height, and the Eden 100 on the other side of 100 that was approved, that was 13 feet. So to conclude, I want to touch on how this project potentially can connect to the Macy's site. So this was, we've hired LHB to take a look at how that, how that could be accomplished. They're focusing right now on an underpass and not so much a bridge over, so, and the idea, and again, these are just rough, nothing finalized, a lot of negotiation still needs to take place with the county, but they do seem open to this idea. Part of the, what would be desirable is to have an opening, similar to the underpass over by the YMCA on York, to provide some light into that area. So this is just a very rough rendering of what that might look like, so you can see the opening in the middle. The length here is still up to negotiation, again, of course, with the county, but this, that east-west pedestrian connection through this site would tie into the Macy's site on the other side. So both sites would be graded to accommodate that potential future use. So with that, again, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report, and with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you for standing, Carrie. Anyone? Questions? All right. Commissioner Day.
Can we touch on the timeline a little bit, just because I'm a little hazy on all the different steps that have gone on here, right? So I tried to follow along 65, 66 on the packet. September 2022, planning commission approved what exactly? Is that the hotel? Because I don't remember being part of that discussion.
No, no, that was the preliminary rezoning and the overall site plan with the, basically, what the planning commission reviewed was this proposal here. And so that received preliminary approval from the city council. They then came back in 2023 to obtain their final approvals. Final approvals don't come before the planning commission, you just get the one shot like, like this evening. So that was when they received their final approvals, was 2013.
2023?
2023.
That was, so that was, so that was January of 2023 when they submitted their revised plans, so according to the packet, so it's January 10th, 2023, submitted revised plans, and then on February 7th, that's when the city council granted final approval?
Yes.
Okay, and was the hotel part of that final? Right, so it was just, but I remember reviewing the hotel, and I'm missing that in the timeline, so that's why I'm trying to figure out when that dropped, when residential was added with 10,000 feet of commercial, and then when that has dropped, right? That sequence of events.
Yeah, so when they obtained those approvals in early 2023, this was what was considered, it was the potential for housing, but not detailed. So it was after that, they then came in, I don't have the exact date, I can, I can look it up for us, but that's when the hotel was considered, because the traffic study that was done as part of that first phase and the overall development didn't include a hotel. That was considered, the housing was factored in. So they were just, wanted a sketch plan, take the temperature of the planning commission and council to change the overall development plan, but they decided against the hotel.
Yeah, because what I was missing here was really the residential with the 10,000-square-feet of commercial, because I didn't remember seeing that specifically. I remember seeing the hotel, but I didn't remember that pre-component before we, I guess now we're stepping back to that, and now saying, well, actually, we're going to drop the 10,000-feet of commercial, right? So, okay.
Good clarifications. Yeah, Commissioner Bornstein.
Oh, so just to clarify, did the, so the overall development plan was approved in 2023, that's what you were just talking about, right?
Yes, yeah, but the planning commission review was 2022.
Okay. Did the, did the overall development plan contain the 10,000 square feet of retail?
Yeah, again, so it was just conceptual, but it was contemplated in this shape with 150 units and 10,000 square feet of retail on the first floor.
Yeah, that's just what I was trying to clarify, because one thing we're being asked is whether, whether what's being proposed today is consistent with that overall development plan, right?
Right.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, in thinking about the tunnel, or whatever, whatever it's called, that might go under France and connect from the Macy's site to this site, can you just remind me, is there, yeah, this was really helpful. Is there anything further west of the site we're talking about today that, that, you know, this connector would further connect into, like some other system or something like that? Or, or would this tunnel really just be a way to connect the site? Would the starting point basically be, like, for someone who wanted to walk the site we're talking about today, allowing them to get into the Macy's site and then to get into Centennial Lakes?
Correct. There is the regional bike trail along Gallagher.
Okay.
So this might be a, some might choose to
Okay.
come up here and then cross France that way, rather than at the stoplight here.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And Carrie, right, there is always the potential for the west promenade that maybe, right?
Yeah, that was, that comes from the Southdale Design Guidelines, the desire is to have that west-side promenade to take some of the pressure off of France Avenue. The idea being that this potentially could be part of that, depending on how development goes to the north and to the south.
Yeah, it's just something important to distinguish, and that's another reason why to connect to it for long term. Commissioner Hopp.
Thanks, yeah, sorry, and I'm newer, so I don't have all of the history, but the other office building with the coffee shop has not been constructed, but is moving forward. And so we know that the landscaping and the parking and all this stuff is, thank you.
Yes, yeah, ideally, they'd like to start construction on that this fall. The developer can confirm that as part of their construct, presentation. The developer can confirm that as part of their presentation, but.
Thank you, Commissioner Hahn, and I said Hahn, which is even funnier, sorry. So it's all the same, right? Commissioner Elkire.
Excuse me, a couple things. The 16-foot to 14-foot first-floor height, does that apply to 7200 or 7250 or both?
My recollection, I think I even have that here. I think the 7200, yeah, they will have a 20-foot ceiling height on the first level.
On 7250, on the one to the south?
On 7250, I'm sorry, yes.
Interesting, okay. I'm not sure the right way to think about this tunnel. Maybe you can help me out. Because as I understand it, it's a concept that has some support, but it's not a done deal. Is that the way to think about it?
Yep, that's fair.
So if one's thinking about, I mean, one might think differently about certain aspects of the project we're talking about tonight, if there was a tunnel versus if there wasn't a tunnel. So what would your advice be on how to deal with that?
Yeah, overall, the plan still, you know, it meets that vision that we have for the Southdale District of dividing properties into smaller parcels for development and enabling pedestrian movement in and around them. So this still accomplishes that, whether we cross France in this exact location or maybe somewhere else on France. So it's still accomplishing those goals of movement through the site, to get people through the site.
Okay, thank you. One more thing. It's a testament to the commitment of our volunteer commissioners, I have a question from a commissioner who is not here. But even though she was not here, she read the packet and prepared a question. So I thought it only fair to share it with you. It's from Commissioner Padilla. Stantec did a traffic study on the property and determined there will be slightly less traffic if the, I should be giving parking or traffic study questions to you rather than the applicant, right?
Yeah, you can ask them, and Mr. Terhard can respond.
Come out of the ceiling, okay. So Stantec did a traffic study on the property and determined that there will be slightly less traffic if the retail is eliminated. Stantec did a traffic study of the property across the street, the Macy's property, and determined there was adequate capacity. Both of these properties are at the intersection of France and Gallagher. Have these traffic studies been done independently of one another so that neither takes into account both properties being developed? It seems to me that taken separately, these two traffic studies don't mean much if they do not consider one another.
I think, yeah, I think I can take that one.
Okay.
Stantec did not do the study for Macy's. I believe that was Kim Lee Horn. There was an EAW that was done on the Macy's site, so it was a little more advanced. Traffic was part of that. But they do take each project, within every traffic study, there's a multiplier of just anticipated development of 10%. When the Macy's study was done, we knew of this project, so this project went into the Macy's study and was considered in addition to that 10% multiplier that they use.
Great, thank you. She can follow up with you if she has follow-ups.
Commissioner Felton?
I'm going to ask a follow-up question about the bridge or tunnel as well. They're considering a couple of options in this area. Did they consider an option from the grocery store parking lot on 70th or down at Gallagher? At Lunsenireles, yeah. What did I say?
When that project went in?
You know, because this study was done this past year, and I'm wondering.
Yeah, they're really just focused on, because these two development projects are in play for redevelopment, this is the opportunity to perhaps make that connection. So whether this is the ideal spot, it may or may not be. But it was something that the council was interested in, just giving the development on both sides.
And if the timing doesn't work out, would people, would, I mean, I think it would be a benefit to kind of look at this in other intersections as well.
It certainly could, yes, yeah. And to Mr. Frankel's point about if it's a bridge over, ramping needs to be factored in. Both sites have designed their projects that could accommodate either or, but yet, whether there's been specifics for the bridge over and where that ramping takes place, there would have to be a further study on that. But right now, they're, they seem to be focusing on the underpass.
Commissioner Miranda?
So this bridge tunnel thing, this is a land use issue, and it's a transportation issue, but as far as I know, nobody from Planning Commission or Transportation Commission is involved with this.
In terms of the underpass?
Planning for, yeah.
It's something that the HRA is wanting to pursue. The development plans that we're looking at can accommodate either way. So really, the underpass, bridge over is not necessarily in the purview of this project, just knowing that it could accommodate either.
Right, but I guess my point is that it's a, I mean, it's something that the Planning Commission and Transportation Commission, I would think, be involved in from day one.
Perhaps if the, if the HRA directed that type of review, that could be possible in the future, where we are kind of in the beginning stages here.
Because, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it's part of our purview. And then can we require an easement to the Nine Mile Creek Trail as a condition of this approval? So that it would connect?
So where are you?
Well, I mean, from the, you know, from the tunnel or bridge or whatever, it would have to go south, right, to connect to the trail.
So there would be public easements
Okay.
Over this area, this area, and this area. So that could be, that could be part of that, part of that easement agreement?
Okay, and then the, you know, on the west side, it's called a street, but it's not really a street. Is there another name? It's not an alley. It's privately owned, but it's, will have public access, so you don't really want to call it a private street, but is there?
Yeah, it's not a public street. They're responsible to maintain, upkeep, plowing.
Right, I just don't like it being called a street on these diagrams, because it's not. I mean, if I wanted to run for city council and stand on the curb and have a sign, I probably couldn't do that there, so. I could probably walk through, but I probably couldn't, or if I wanted to protest or something. So I'm concerned about the public, you know, public space, that there's, we're not having a public space.
Yeah, maybe public access is the right term.
Okay, thank you.
Beth?
Yeah, thank you, Director Teague, for the presentation. I know within our design guidelines for France Avenue, it contemplates, you know, multi-use, so commercial office, industrial, potentially in the future. And so what I'm thinking of is, once this building goes in and has a particular use, and then that use could change over time. And so if we want to change, for example, the ceiling height, then that could potentially limit what could go in there in the future. So I guess my questions would kind of be around the height question, right? And I know we've been talking about this a little bit, but I don't think we have settled. But when we say that it's 14 feet, is it really definition-wise, from the floor to the underside of, I guess, the concrete slab on the ceiling? So then, if that's the definition, then you have to accommodate for air conditioning, HVACs, these kind of things? Like, how would you define ceiling height?
Yeah, that's what we've been working on as part of our ordinance amendment, to clearly define that, because it's not necessarily clearly defined. So that's one of our items we can, we need to, we've started it, we just haven't concluded it yet.
Gotcha. So if it's, if that's the true definition, and when you account for all the ductwork and everything, and the trusses and everything, then your effective use could potentially be even less feet, you know? It might be a, you know, might take three feet off, so that's looking at roughly 11 feet ceiling from floor to when your head hits something. So that's just one consideration, right? Like, if you want to reduce the height, then that certainly limits what future potential uses could go there. And just to play off of Director, Commissioner Elkire's question, right? The 7250 building has a 20-foot height. This one started off with a, I guess it was approved for 16, and now they want to take it down to 14. I know with the more height is usually reserved for, like, big box-type spaces, right? You want more height in those kind of spaces. But if we take away the big box element out of this, then it's more office-residential. And so any ideas why, and I maybe have to go back and watch the videos, but why did we allow the 16-foot height on this site, but left it at 20 at the other side?
Yeah, that's a good question. My recollection is, it was more about wanting to limit the height, the overall height at 72 feet, reduce it from the 76 with the other building. And they thought the way to accomplish that is to take four feet out of that first floor, that would reduce the height down. I think that was the, that's the discussion that I recall.
Slightly different question. Site plan responsibilities. I think in the, in the information, the city would manage, I think, five feet of plowing, let's just say, of France Avenue. And I think the developer would manage the rest. So when we say manage the rest, how do you even go through negotiating what? Because there's, there's 19% public, and the rest of it is private, right? So how does the city look at what's their responsibility to manage versus what is the developer's responsibility to manage?
Yeah, that's all negotiated as part of the development agreements, site plan agreements that go into it. So the negotiation is mainly with our Public Works Department, engineering, to make sure it's clear who's responsible for what.
The last question, I guess, for me, and this could tie into when the developer comes up. A lot of discussion with the public, with most likely the Cornelia neighborhood, with, I think it was roof access concerns about noise, and I think removal of the commercial kitchen because of smells, right? But again, if we build this site, would it be, you know, could in the future, we add those things back in? So we design this building in a way that could accommodate future uses? Because again, what I'm trying to think through is, what else could we do, right? If we start constricting certain things, then it limits what we could do. So I'm trying to think through just what could we add back later versus what we're stuck with once it goes up? And so, you know, maybe not a question for you, but maybe the developer, when they come up, they could probably help us think through that. But that's just kind of the scope of how I'm thinking about this.
Yeah, I can respond. That's part of, part of a PUD, there's a specific plan that's tied to the site. So if they're going to make a change in the use, say, to a hotel, they need to come back and amend the PUD, almost like a, it's not necessarily a rezoning, but you're changing that overall development plan and changing the use. So the city would have some discretion there.
So just to tie off of this, if the plan has no commercial kitchen today, but in the future, we want to put a commercial kitchen for a restaurant, then they'd have to come back?
They would, they would have to provide parking for the restaurant as well, so that's going to change the parking count. But that would be an intensification of the use, and it would come back to the Planning Commission and City Council.
Gotcha. All right, that's it for now, thank you.
I was just wondering what the problem with adding the two feet instead of cutting it off the first floor compared to just adding it to the top and sticking to our original 14, or I guess 16?
Yeah, I know they've run a lot of alternatives where they can take that out. There's a lot of options here, maybe one for the developer to respond to.
Awesome, thank you.
Something that builds off of Commissioner Smith's line of questioning, right? So in terms of coming back and making changes to the plan, right? So is it, are we only here right now because of the variance specifically request? And if they had just dropped the retail without asking for a variance on the first-floor height, would we have any purview over this whatsoever? Would it be coming in front of us?
Yeah, you would have, it would still be site plan review, so it would still be planning commission. Yeah, so take the ordinance amendment out in terms of the first-floor height. We'd still need to amend the ordinance just to insert the final development or the final site plan for Phase Two.
Okay.
So it would be an ordinance amendment as well as a site plan review. So really, the request would be the same, but we're just adding the approved site plan to the ordinance.
Okay, makes sense. Thanks.
All right, I got a couple. Related, but on the heels of Commissioner Smith's question, we did have a work session. I believe we landed on trying to define the height as if there's more than one story from floor to floor. And at least that's how their plans show, right? The 14 feet is from finished floor elevation of the first floor to second. And that's pretty standard, so I'd assume that's how we would do it going forward. So then, yes, you lose that effective space in between, but that's just something that is pretty consistent across the board. Secondly, regarding the site plan, at what level of changes, you know, warrant and trigger this coming back to us? I mean, as Commissioner Day was saying, I mean, when they came back with a sketch plan review for like a hotel, which was, you know, a different concept, and this is a different concept, although it's not that different, who makes the call? You guys, or is it partly the development team too of, you know, we think this is pretty in line to what was approved, minus this one change, so we're just going to go for the approvals? Like, what is that process, just so other people can understand too?
Yeah, so there was no site plan approval given for Phase Two, just that overall development plan. You know, we had the box, and they were going to do the landscaping and everything around that box, but there was no site plan approval given. So they would be coming back to the Planning Commission and Council for that site plan approval, no matter what is proposed there.
Yeah, just, I guess, in reference to, you know, when there's a change for that Phase Two, like what triggers or prompts, you know, the sketch plan process that we, you know, because this is different, right? I mean, there's no retail. Who makes the, is that kind of staff in line with them? You know, just kind of?
Yeah, we had that discussion, and I think we were both in agreement on the hotel. That was clearly a different use. With this one, we talked about it. I believe staff recommended that they come back for the sketch plan, because, you know, the footprint got a little bit bigger and the retail's eliminated, but that's not a requirement. They figured, because they had the overall development plan, we basically had the site developed, they chose not to do the, another sketch plan review. They could have, though.
Okay. I just think it's good for people to understand. That's all I have for, questions for you? Anyone else? All right, I guess we will welcome the development team up and give you a chance to give a presentation, introduce yourselves. Tell us what we need to hear.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ted Carlson with Orion Investments. Along with me tonight is Bob Loken with ESG, Ari Parz with Afton Park, and Drew Stafford also with Orion. So, behalf of our development team, thank you for engaging tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Bob Loken to talk about some of the highlights of the project and take you through a quick presentation, and then I'll be prepared to address a bunch of the questions and comments that we heard here tonight.
Karen, you want me to run the presentation from my laptop?
It's up on the screen.
So I can just flip through it here? Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. I am going to just flip through this pretty quickly so we can leave a lot of time for discussion. I don't know if you all want this to be interactive, or if you want me to flip through and then we have the interaction.
I'd say go through it first, and then, yeah, if you can do it a little more brief, that'll help. Thanks.
Great. A lot of this, Carrie, went over, but just some project overviews. This is the Phase Two of an approved PUD. It's largely consistent with the approved density and height, and largely consistent with the approved use, with the exception of the retail, which has already been under discussion. One of the important things to recognize that have advanced from the original PUD approval and even the hotel sketch plans at middle is that both of those previous iterations for 7200 anticipated some surface parking. The approved PUD showed surface parking. On the west side, the hotel contemplated a surface turnaround which had some parking. We think one of the things that we've been able to improve with this project is we've, all of the parking is structured, so none of it is visible. And then we've also talked about the reduced traffic demand, not only from going from the once proposed hotel use, but also the elimination of the retail, and traffic was one of those biggest concerns that we heard from the neighborhood. And then we'll just go through a few renderings. I thought it was nice to just look at a rendering fully on the screen. We can sort of take it in, you can see a little bit more detail. If there's questions later on, I think this is a handy format to flip back to. But I think one of the things we want to highlight is that the massing and the articulation of the building is meant to be clean, modern, but also we need to make this feel residential and feel like a home. So we want this to be consistent overall with the office building to the south, so thus the clean, modern lines, the relatively restrained material palette. Not often in multifamily housing, you can see a lot of different material changes. We were very careful to articulate this building with clear materials applied to certain masses and material changes only at changes of plane. Some of the things that we're doing, subtle changes in massing, as you can see at the top, even though it is, whoops, I'm going to go back here to the, can I point on this? I'll point with the mouse. This mass at the corner you can see is set back, and so there's a little bit of subtle rhythm as you look along France with different heights in the building. And having a little change in height is important to the design. That's another reason why, in order to keep the building within 72 feet, it was helpful to have that extra two feet to deal with, to play a little bit with the top of the building and have it not be so flat. The night rendering is important because you can see that the top here, which, under some lighting conditions, looks like a normal full story, is actually a balcony, and it is fully recessed. It's an exterior space for those units at the top. Here's another view, looking from the north. You can see this sort of subtle articulation and height. I think it's important to provide some variety and some articulation, not just have a flat-topped And then one of the things we worked with very closely, very strategically, was how to, knowing that Commissioners might have some disappointment at the lack of retail, we made a very strong effort to make this street level as engaging and as pedestrian-friendly as possible. And you can see on the corner here, one of the things that we've done at the street level design, the amenity spaces for the building, the lobby, there's a fitness space that's going to be shared by the office users as well. There is no fitness use dedicated in that office building. It was always intended that there would be some amenities that were shared between those buildings. Those amenities, we've chosen to locate Orient on Danila, on that new east-west street. We're putting all of our eggs in that basket to really try to activate Danila. And one of the things that we've done here to make this a little more welcoming and engaging from the street is, you can see there's essentially a front porch, a large front porch that is accessible to the public, but is also accessible immediately from the interior amenity spaces. There'll be a work-from-home space here and a lobby. And then these walk-up units at street level, they have recessed terraces. They can be very generous terraces. I think these aren't token outdoor spaces. We envision these as really generous spaces, true outdoor rooms. And we do a lot of these first-floor walk-up units in our developments, and they're very popular with dog owners and dog walkers who can have very easy access to going outdoors. They don't need to get into an elevator and try to hope that their dog makes it until they get out. Here's a view, a closer view of that front porch. You can see some suggestion of public art here. And that large 50-foot setback, we think, you know, France Avenue is a busy street. The nice thing about this large 50-foot setback is there is a lot of room to create a landscape buffer, and we think that those outdoor terraces at street level are going to be comfortable spaces despite their proximity to France Avenue, mainly because of that large 50-foot buffer. And then here's a view of what's called Danila Street. And you can see that the design here contemplates an at-grade. This design does not yet anticipate the future tunnel, but we have talked with the city and their consultant about some ways that this project could adapt to that if that does move forward. And then as we move around toward the west and look at this project from the east, I'll highlight a couple of the building stepbacks. So you can see as the building moves west, I always have to think about east-west. North-south is instinctual, east-west, I have to picture a map of the United States. West, you can see the building, there's a setback here. The intention is that the building is a little less closer to the street as it moves toward the neighborhood and moves toward that open space. In addition, at the top floor, there's an upper-story stepback that allows for private unit terraces at the top. And then I think that this image is a really good image to see just how far the building is set back from the rear property line. It's set back more than 200 feet. And then here you can see that, how people will access that amenity from 72nd. And here's another view, looking through, looking essentially from the west, looking through that stormwater feature, which will be, which is now currently an asphalt parking lot, will be quite generously landscaped. And I think this is another way that we can see the sort of U-shaped design of the building, which is consistent with that hotel sketch plan proposal. And I think this is a really good view to talk about how, if there is a grade separated, a tunnel crossing under France, how that might be accommodated. I'll remind the Commissioners, I think a lot of you probably remember this, but the grade of this street here, or this new, not a street perhaps, but a new access, is a full story below the elevation on France. And so you can see that to make that grade up to France, we've got a grand stair here, and there is a switchback ramp which provides accessible access from this level to the level at France. If that tunnel were to be, were to come to fruition, it would be essentially at this elevation of this lower street. And so it would be essentially level as it goes under France. The things that we would have to react to, obviously, is we've taken great effort to activate this at-grade space. If all of a sudden this is lowered, there would have to be some changes, some adjustments to that so that we can keep this activated.
Maybe leave that slide up, Bob?
Yeah.
And I can work to just address some of the questions and then have a dialogue, Commissioner Bennett. Is that appropriate? All right, great. So again, thank you for hosting us tonight. I just think, you know, there are some new faces here, and I think just a reminder on Orion and who we are is Drew and I both live in Edina, our kids are in public school in Edina. And the projects that we've developed within our community include the Lorient at Sunnyside in France, Edina Gateway at 45th in France, Caribou Coffee at Vernon in Interlaken. We purchased the old Titus Building, now the Southdale Professional Center at 66th in York. We are responsible for 7001 France, the US Bank site, and then this site. So we remain fully committed and engaged to our city, of which we're ingrained part of the fabric, and we want to see great development happen. So with that, as we think about our sketch plan from 15 months ago, which was very clearly defined in our PUD and our ordinance, that it may be hotel, it may be multifamily, and our team brought forth a hotel concept. And I think a combination of noise, smell, traffic, a ballroom to host events, potential rooftop bar, while I may really enjoy it, others may not, especially if they're nearby, was really poorly received. And so I think that we, then, as the development team in the midst of a financial crisis in real estate, which has been unprecedented, pushed pause and said, all right, let's revisit this in a more thoughtful manner. And so if Mr. Terhar is on the phone, Carrie, or Coordinator Stephen Oller, I may have butchered that, but if he's available, I'd like to just double-check my math on the traffic reduction because I think it's a very intentional and thoughtful part on behalf of our team. And the math that I do when I look at the traffic report is by eliminating the retail on the first floor, our traffic is reduced by 44%. I'd like Ed, if he's available, to cross-check my math. Because when I look at the report, 10,000 feet of retail would require a weekday total of approximately 545 trips, and those 545 trips would be eliminated.
Let's give him one moment here.
Okay.
He is trying to unmute, I think.
Yeah. So I wanted to start with that, that based upon the sketch plan feedback we had in April, and having a thoughtful lens on how to do this, that was important. The second piece that we think about is the Southdale guidelines are very helpful for our team to figure out thoughtful and creative solutions for development. And so they're guidelines, so they're somewhat open to interpretation, which we fully understand. I think what we think from the development team is a 200-foot buffer from our property line to the adjacent residential to our building is 200 feet, which is very significant. You'll read in our ordinance under the approved PUD and the defined plans that we've spent a lot of time to work with, both Director Miller in engineering and with Luther Overholt in forestry, in conjunction with the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, who, believe it or not, actually has more jurisdiction here over stormwater, come up with a thoughtful plan to preserve the trees on the west side and maintain a great buffer with the neighborhood. In addition, our previous plans showed potential surface parking around about, talked about valet parking and things like that. Well, this plan, there's zero surface parking. Zero. And the only other project that I'm aware of in our city that has zero surface parking is the Lorient, which we also developed at Sunnyside in France. So I just want to put that out there, that this is, I think, another example of some really thoughtful development that's aligned with modern thinking around transportation, pedestrians, bikes, and everything else. I also think that a big core tenet of the Southdale design guidelines is mixed-use activation, pedestrians, other ways to create a vibrant environment. And when half of our site is Class A-plus office and half of our site is residential, we've done a thoughtful way of connecting those two things through a plaza. And then the fitness center in the retail is designed to service our office tenants, and our coffee bar in the office is designed to be open to the public and serve our residents. So I think that creates a nice intersection of what would otherwise be divided uses for this site. As it relates to the plaza, and we've done a lot of work with city staff, including Director Miller in engineering, LHP consultants, who have all of our engineering plans for both sites, civil, landscape, on and on, that we have thoughtfully designed this plaza to accommodate a future underpass or overpass should that come to bear. And we have held that idea sacred since the beginning, to take thoughtful design to allow for that flexibility. So that's on the record, will continue to be on the record, and I believe at City Council that Director T, that Director Miller would speak to that with some sort of certainty. Do you agree?
Director Miller would be available at council.
Yep, thank you. So then it comes to, you know, what have we done as a development team? And to someone's point earlier, well, why reduce the height on the first floor? You know, I think unintended consequences are sometimes the result of really good ideas. And the 20-foot first floor height, in theory, is a really great idea, but its sustainability becomes more at the forefront of what we think about every day. And when our 7250 France project was approved, that was kind of a sacred number for commercial use. And we looked at a residential number, and we thought then maybe 16 feet works. Well, frankly, it's just wasteful. We don't need it. To Commissioner Smith, to your comment, there's somewhere between a two-and-a-half to three-foot, for lack of a better term, joist or interspatial, where you've got structural and then HVAC and other utilities servicing the building. So a 14-foot height would be somewhere between 11 and 11 and 11 and a half feet of finished ceiling. And when we hear about the sustainability initiatives, of a large part of which this commission is a part of, building an extra two feet is wasteful and doesn't gain us anything other than more cost, more heating, more cooling for space that serves no purpose. So in the interest of being thoughtful and trying to be forward-thinking to some of the comments we heard tonight, we felt that, you know what, let's present it to this body and see how you react. And so I think with that, I've hopefully hit on several of your questions, but if not, Ari, who is a multifamily development expert, Bob and I remain committed to helping work through any further questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for the good presentation and coming forward again. Beautiful plan. I will open it up to questions amongst Commissioners. Yeah, Commissioner Smith?
I have a lot of thoughts. I'm trying to see if I can distill it down into something that makes sense. A lot of things, right? So high-level, 50,000-foot view. When we look at this particular building, we heard a lot about activation of Danila. And kudos to you. Talk about legacy. I think you said you name it after one of your kids, I think.
It's after my daughter and my goddaughter. My daughter is Danielle. If you're watching, Dani, hello. My goddaughter, Mila is watching, hello. Mila also happens to be Drew's daughter, so Daniela.
That's great. That's, I wish I could do that. So when I think about this building, right, one thing that we would enjoy on France, France is a busy street, we want to get activation with residents coming out for a walk, right? You want to be in that busy hustle and bustle. We want to make sure that Danila is also activated as well, which I think you guys are thinking about. When I look at the west side of this building, you have the trees and a gradual kind of calming sensation going into the residential area, right? So this building essentially cuts off the noise from France Avenue and separates that noise from the more tranquil side. So if I think about this as two different zones, I could see the France zone being like the hip happening, let's drive my fancy car down France, and everybody looks at it zone. And then on the other side is I want to take a sit-down in the park and just relax and enjoy nature. Here the birds, here the wind blow through the tree. Here the birds, here the, the wind blow through the trees, right? So that's, that's my 50,000-foot view. So how does it come down, right? So the pool area that you have here, that cutout, what I'm thinking in my head is, why shift them, why is that massing that way? Why not shift that, right, so that the pool area is facing Danila? You're bringing more of that activation into that courtyard area, right? You kind of mentioned that you wanted to connect the gym for folks in the office space to use the amenities, right? I see a pool as an amenity, you could probably add that to your list of amenities, but somehow shift the massing so that that pool area faces Danila as well, kind of create more of that activation on the inside. That's one thought that I have. Bring more sunlight instead of on one side, you get it on three sides, but south-facing southern exposure, so you get more sunlight, I would guess, in that space. So I want to understand a little bit more about your thinking on the massing of the building. Thinking about retail, right? So we, I know you guys eliminated retail, and you had a really great image where folks were kind of like sitting down and like chatting, right? So again, having those chairs and tables on the France side, you're forced to talk louder, right? Because the cars are buzzing by, you're yelling, not yelling, but you're talking loud to your friends and you're getting that energy going. Is a coffee shop, a bistro, is that considered retail or light retail? And would that trigger some kind of a additional driving? I don't think so, but I'd love to hear what you guys think. If that's going to trigger a whole bunch of new cars, if you just add more bistro, a coffee shop? Because I would come out here and sit down, get a sandwich and a coffee and chat with my friends, right? I would walk out of Cornelia, walk over here, sit down and say, hey, meet me at, you know, 7200, and let's hang out. You know, that's the kind of vibe that I'm looking for, right? So I guess two questions, from the 30,000-foot view to just these zones. Tell us more about how do you come up with your design layout, right? The massing of the building in particular. And then two, when we think about retail, is light retail, and I don't know if that's a real term, but is light retail like a coffee shop, bistro, something within scope that's possible here that wouldn't trigger like massive amount of parking on cars? So just those two things, I'd love to hear more your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I can, I can respond to the massing. I think that's a really good question, and I think the massing you described could result in a, in a really successful building as well. I think the main reason why we, why we chose to orient the courtyard to the west is we are thinking of this, you know, we're going to invest a lot of land and, and effort and trees in this, in this amenity, and we're thinking of that as a very Sylvan amenity. And we really like the idea of this courtyard, which faces west. Whenever we, whenever we do solar studies of amenity terraces, particularly with pools, we're always looking at exposure to afternoon light. Afternoon is the most popular time to use these amenity areas, so we're always looking at afternoon light. And so the courtyard is wide enough, and, and that aperture open to the west also helps direct afternoon light to that terrace when it is used the most. The other reason to orient the two legs of the building, east-west, is that we know that in our, in our climate, in our zone, east-west oriented buildings are by, it's by far a better passive solar design. It uses less energy, there's less energy and cooling. Those western exposures are, are the, are the most expensive to cool, and you want a long southern exposure to take advantage of, of natural passive heating in the winter. So a combination of just our gut about which, which amenity we want to orient our courtyard to, and then also based on what's the best solar orientation for, for energy design.
And then I'll answer your second question. My name's Ari Parrotson with Afton Park Development. I'm the multifamily lead on this site. Ted and I kind of yin and yang for what does the apartment need, what does the office building need? And we've, we've had a lot of good ideas that have been the intersection of those. And your second question is an example of that. So the 7250 office building has a cafe inside, a coffee shop, and we felt like it, it wouldn't add a lot of value to try to replicate something that 7250 already had, that our residents in the neighborhood could use when it's, when it's already there. And likewise, we added a fitness center, they didn't need to, so that we could economize the, the use between the two sites. People traveling to a new retail, if we were to put it in on this corner, like specifically the corner that's facing Danila, it would present some challenges that we didn't think were worthwhile to kind of further, you know, reorient the building. The first is that we felt like our lobby in the central welcoming access point, the place where our property manager and our employees are congregated, would be best served to be on that public-facing plaza. There's going to be a lot of interactions with the public, there, there could be maintenance needs, it's just good to have permanent eyes on that. And we felt like the employees of our building are going to be the best permanent eyes and accountable eyes looking at that. So we felt having our front entry, our lobby, our management space there was going to add a lot of value to both sites in general. And if we had some kind of a retail use in addition to a coffee shop in 7250, it almost necessarily would command a vehicular use too. And we didn't think that adding more traffic and dedicating more parking inside of our structured parking garage was going to be a worthwhile endeavor and in addition displace the amenity space and probably the adjacent units that line it on France Avenue. So that's why we didn't put another retail space there, in addition to some of the reasons already discussed.
Thank you.
What are questions? Commissioner Day.
Okay, so, sorry. Since we've been in development for quite some time, my understanding, following along with the timeline, that the original approval to your group was given in October of 2022. Is that, that's correct, by the planning commission?
I believe that's correct. I know that our resolution was executed in January or February of 2023, so that timing would track correct.
Okay. All right. So seeing as I wasn't on the planning commission in October of 2022 and wasn't privy to the discussion of the overall development plan, all I really saw was the hotel piece. I think, I think that was spring of 2023, it was when you came and visited us, talked about that. So I remember a lot of discussion around the activation of the site, constant activity, everything. Do you think, you know, pure residential kind of jives with that development plan, I guess, that you gave in 2022? And then I guess with the intent of the hotel in terms of constant activity, activation of the site? So, you know, when we talked about the hotel, I remember a lot of spend, times being spent on, you know, is there going to be a restaurant on the, at the bottom of the hotel? Is there going, how are we going to bring people into Danila? Make that a more inviting space? And it seemed like that was the intent, right? We wanted to welcome people in there, we wanted to have constant activity, we wanted to bring people into that space and maybe even shuttle them over to the west and bring them, you know, further west. That's the vision, right? Correct? And I mean, do you think that this resident, just purely residential jives with that? Because to me, it seems a bit in conflict, because I don't particularly think that a pure residential spot, if I'm being honest and walking past something, I, I see that now as a closed park, that's, that's separate, that's part of the apartment complex, not something that I would go into if there's no commercial element down the street. Right? So I don't know, I guess just explain a little bit of that. There's multiple questions in there, so answer them as you will.
I think that's a really great question. I think the activation is at or above with apartments, and here's why. When you do a hotel study on 150 units, the average occupancy in Edina right now at the competing properties runs at 60% peak, so that would put 90 hotel units being occupied. And on a 10,000-square-foot retail space, I think Director Teague, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were looking at a restaurant of 150 plus or minus seats plus staff. And that becomes problematic for a couple of different reasons. I'm staring at the floor because I'm trying to think through the math. Number one is the parking burden that that creates. Number two is the traffic burden that creates. And number three, if I think back to 90 occupied hotel units versus 150 occupied apartment units, that's a pretty significant difference, assuming that apartment units are not occupied by one person, but generally on average of like two or right around two people. So if I think about 300 plus or minus residents there with a lot less traffic demand and a lot less parking demand, I think it becomes a really better use for the neighborhood and our community, but also becomes a better use for potential activation. I think that is, if people are living in those apartments and they're there, that they will take advantage of the infiltration basin, they'll take advantage of the sidewalks and the bike, they'll take advantage of the park. In addition, I think they'll take advantage of the programming for the office building next door, which will include not only a coffee shop, but food trucks and other things down along the infiltration basin. So yes, as I think through that and answer your question, I do think that this is a great use for the site.
Okay. In terms of, I guess, I keep circling back because the wording is, is important, right, in terms of the overall development plan. So when that was pitched in October 2022, was there anything, I mean, that stands out to you? I'm asking you to remember back almost two years, or, you know, two years now. You know, all we saw, or at least from my understanding, is all that was seen as a box, right? But what, I guess, hopes and aspirations did you communicate in terms of innovative design, anything around missing middle housing? I mean, anything like that? Or what was that overall message that was communicated by the team?
No, that's a great question. I think it's accurately reflected in our resolution and bullet point, you know, 1.04, where it clearly calls out, calls out housing or hotel, plus or minus 150 units or rooms with or without retail. So I think we were very clear, certainly with staff and on the dais, that we weren't unsure as to what the site would be, but would use our best efforts to try to give everyone an example of what we think it could be. And I think as, as we, you know, are going through this financial challenge and in working to design a project that fits, I, I believe that we were very clear in communicating that this could be one of many, one of two options, either multifamily or hospitality. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. No, I think that, I think that helps clarify.
So when it comes to us to, to design, I mean, we, to, as, as Mr. John Carlson, who's no relation to me, mentioned earlier, said we want to design projects with wow and pop. And I think Bob and Ari can testify that, you know, we want this to look elevated, we want this to look nice, we want this to be better, we want this to have, you know, bigger balconies, we want this to just stand out a little bit and look nice and use some inspiring projects to not just build another cube. So I think that's where we take multiple design iterations over and over again, that you don't have the privy of scene because we're here now, but I think this is probably design charrette seven or eight is what makes it way before you. So I think Director Teague and staff get some of that as we're coming with ideas and concepts and working through it. But ultimately, you know, what you see tonight is our best effort to align many different parties and opinions with, you know, maybe not a perfect project, but something that we think is very good.
I'm going to keep going. That's all right. Since it's such a long and iterative process, right, when, can I ask, when was the last time the community was engaged or updated with what's going on? Because I've picked up on a lot of confusion in terms of, you know, this site has had many, many proposals, hotel, back, you know, residential hotel, back to residential. Just wondering what that process with the community has been like and what the reception's been.
That's very fair. I mean, I think the first redevelopment proposal for this site came back 10 years ago in 2014. And there's been multiple projects that are approved and haven't worked for whatever reason. We notify the neighborhood the day that we submit our project to the city staff. And I think if you talk to some of the neighbors and residents who are here in attendance or, or earlier, is that one of the core tenants of Orion and our team is that we don't want the neighborhood to ever feel like they've not been engaged or heard. So Joel, I think, is our contact for the Neighborhood Association, there's other influential people. Drew and I had an in-person meeting last night, and we have a meeting scheduled for August 1st at Arneson Acres with the neighborhood.
And Ted, can I add one more thing? We've also been monitoring the Better Together Edina site for the comments that are posted there to see if anything's come out of that that would be instructive in how we're approaching our project. So there, I, I checked it just again right before the meeting started, and I think there was half a dozen or so comments and some similarities in there. Nothing that, you know, was particularly influential in what we could do at this stage, but it's another resource that we've been consulting.
Yeah. One final small question before I move along to other commissioners. So there was a bit of a discrepancy in terms of the parking, is this 153 units or 150?
153.
Okay. Because the parking study said 150, so I was like, wait a second, there's, what changed there? And I, some residents actually picked up on that and communicated that to me and said, what's going on? Why is there a difference there?
It was basically a function of our market study. You know, we were constantly trying to figure out what the right mix of apartment units is in a building like this. You know, we, we had a given massing that we didn't change, we're basically just carving it up in a slightly different way, and we felt like we had the opportunity to add a few more units, particularly on the first floor. So we had been reserving certain spaces for amenity use and for storage and for other functions, and we felt like we don't need as much as we've reserved for there, so we could probably just add another residential unit or two on the ground, which you can see reflected in our plans. So it was basically just a alignment, reconciliation of the unit mix.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I doubt it impacted the traffic study, three units impacted the traffic study very much, but I thought I would ask just because it is a point of confusion or small discrepancy. So, thanks.
Commissioner Borncyn.
Yeah, just two real quick. So is the, is the building of the office component contingent on anything we do today? Is there any plan to like get that built or going? That's one question. And the other question is, I think somebody said the hotel got a poor reception or something. Hotel has got a poor reception. When did that happen? I don't remember that happening at our meeting. I think, I remember people kind of thinking it was kind of cool and giving it a positive reception, so, or like a optimistic, it could have potential type of reception, because it was unique and it was going to be unique to the area and bring activity to the area. I don't remember anybody complaining about the turnaround or anything like that. So what happened, like, who didn't like the hotel?
Yeah, that's a great question. I feel like the hotel maybe was more positively received here, but I don't know that I would call it super enthusiastic and maybe a little less positive at City Council, frankly. We also heard from neighborhood leaders that hotel was not a great idea. Director Teague, is that fair? So with all due respect, that's where it's coming from.
Okay.
And then as it relates to, I'm sorry, I missed your first question.
Oh, I was just wondering if you could remind me whether the building of the...
Yes, still to the office. We are negotiating a term sheet with a lender right now that is doable. And so that is plus or minus an $87 million project. And as you can imagine, with the office headlines right now, financing that is challenging, but we are firm believer in our community, our project, our design, and we have very good tenant demand. So Drew and I and our team are doing everything we can to get shovels in the ground by October 1st. If I was going to bet on it today, I would say it's 75% chance that happens.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yep. As, as long as we're on that subject, it may be an important nuance to point out that back when we were going through this process in 2022 and early 2023 was that, you know, we, we, neither us, you, the city council, or residents frankly, should be left with a site that's undeveloped, where we don't know what's happening. So the burden of the infiltration basin, the north, south connector non-street, the sidewalks and, and everything else are being borne by the office building. So I think that was an important nuance, that the public benefit that's delivered is just maybe 19% on this site, but it's approaching 40% on easements across the entire site for public use and benefit. That was kind of the impetus behind the way that this was set up. Is that fair, Director Teague?
And Ted, maybe, I think it's fair to point out, like, we could debate whether a residential project or a hotel project is more exciting or, or better, but the fact is that the hotel project is simply not viable, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
I was thinking, I've, I've worked from home for 13 years, I think now, and what's great is I work for four hours and then I jump up and go outside and walk and go to a coffee shop or do an errand, and then I go and I work for two hours and then I meet a friend, and then I go and work for two hours or whatever it is. So in terms of the activation, I think, besides the number, the amount of people that are going to be living there, I think it's going to be active, especially with the, the ground going to be living there, I think it's going to be active, especially with the, the ground level walkout units with the dog owners and the, and so, and I also see Danila being active. I'm calling it Danila Plaza in my head because I don't think it's a street. And I also like the, I'm kind of jumping ahead, I did have a question here somewhere. I like the breaking down of the massing to the west, to the neighborhood.
If I could, I could piggyback on that too, is that, aside from the very astute reasons that Ari and Bob shared, is that it may not be appropriate to have that public element facing the office building?
Right, and I think, and I think it just breaks down the mass of the building rather than being a facade on that, on that west side. So I think my, I am, and I'm actually okay with, because I do remember the question about what was it going to be. I don't remember all the specifics, but I remember the hotel not being 100% baked in in this. So the massing is the same, the land use is the same, but, but for me, I am wondering a little bit, we've got the 14-foot and the 20-foot, and this is, I love that they're separate and following the Southdale guidelines, but the, kind of a cohesiveness between the two buildings. I mean, they feel similar, but I'm wondering if there's a little bit, one of the reasons we have the height guideline and are thinking about it is that we want kind of a street level all across France, all about the same level, whatever it is. So I'm thinking about that here between these two buildings. I see a little bit in the play of the openings in the front of the office building, the play of the openings in front of the walkout dog units, and I see a little bit in that some of the dark, but I'm wondering about pulling them together.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I would suggest that, Bob, you've, I think, heard from Ari and I and our design team, we want these to be cousins.
Precisely, that's what I was going to say. Not twins, not siblings, not, maybe not even siblings, but cousins, right?
For that exact reason. And I think that we want to have it be complementary, and the name of our office building is The Craftsman, in testament to Adelson and Peterson, who's our lead tenant, general contractor, a billion-dollar-plus Minnesota headquartered company, and I think is a demonstration of excellence in the construction field. So, you know, I don't know if this is called the artisan, if, if approved or what, but I think that there's designed, intentional design to have carryover. The amenities in the office building are on the northwest corner, which, and the amenities in, in this proposed building are in the south and southeast and southwest corners, so they're intentionally designed to help facilitate interaction between professional office users and residents.
Yeah, and I, I believe you in the activation of the street between those two and the way Danila Plaza is designed. I can see the activation and I can see it being active throughout the day because of, I suspect a lot of people that will be working from home and will have varied schedules. Okay, and, yeah, so for me, it's that, that, that question of that, of that street level, as you're walking down, I like the trees, I like trees actually separating you from France Avenue. I can actually see myself walking down in front of this on France. So the only question is like some, even though they're cousins, I mean, maybe they still share the same last name, some sort of uniformity on that street, that length of street, all the way through the two.
Yeah, our, our sidewalk design and landscape design is uniform throughout the project.
Yeah, I do like that as well. I like the rear street, public access, more in this version than the previous version because it feels a little cleaner. And I like the engagement with the water retention area, and I'm actually, I, I tried to do this 20 years ago, like have people like throw grasses in water retention areas, and I think they can be nice, wild places.
And then to further and talk about that point is that we are responsible for maintenance and upkeep of that basin, and we are directed by Nine Mile Creek Watershed District through Confluence or Landscape Architect on what is planted there and how that maintenance is handled, so we can provide assurance that it won't turn into a dirt patch.
Thank you. That was my only question, that street.
Yeah, and I was thinking, thinking a little bit more about how closely related those two buildings are in terms of design or specific characters, I think it's important that the residents and tenants of each of these buildings feel that they're in a unique building. Like, I think when, when you have a visitor coming to, to visit you, you don't want them to be confused about, like, oh, that big office-y complex, like, no, it's the residential building on the corner versus the, the office building on the opposite corner. And I think it's not explicitly mentioned in, in the Southdale Design Guidelines, but I think part of the motivation for dividing development sites into smaller blocks, obviously the primary motivation is for access, pedestrian access, that sort of thing. But I think, I think another just sort of implicit motivation is, is to create a little more heterogeneity, if I can use that word, in, 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 in larger developments like this, like this is a large development. I think if, if those buildings looked closer to each other or very close to each other, I think it might look too monolithic. I, I think as, I think part of the motivation of, of dividing those blocks into 200-foot blocks is, is to give the impression of a city that has evolved over time. And so even though these two buildings are being proposed more or less as part of the same development, will be constructed, constructed at the same time, I think when they're fully built out, I think it will be, I think it will serve the neighborhood better for these to have, look more heterogeneous.
Yeah, and fair enough. I'm not, I'm not slavish to it, but I always think of European cities where they're all built out of the same thing, and, I mean, onings are different and that's about it. You still find your way home, but I'm not, it's fine with me.
Couple sort of tactical questions. The coffee at 7250, there's no surface parking lot, so, and I know that's the other building, but how, how did we imagine the rest of the public accessing that space?
At 7250, there are 13 at-grade stalls.
Oh, there are there, got it.
Yes, this 7200 is all contained within the building.
Thank you. I'm sure you saw on, on Better Together 2, and it's not unique to your development, there's a lot of concern about if the city, particularly in Southdale, has too many apartments, too many rental apartments. I'm sure you did, when you pivoted from the hotel, did some market research. Can you just tell us for the benefit of, of the public, what you did and what your, what you understood about what the competition's occupancy is and, and how they're feeling and performing, so the world can hear that we're not just rubber stamping more apartments?
Yeah, absolutely, that's a good question. If you put a pin in the buildings that just opened and are in the middle of lease-up, all the buildings that are stabilized and have been open for some time are full, with rents that are rising. So when we did our market study, we looked at all the existing buildings, and we looked at the buildings that we knew about as either likely to come or definitely coming, including the Macy's site across the street. That was sort of the biggest future supply that impacts the demand for our building. And so even with their 500-plus units, they're still in excess of demand when you take our site and the Macy's site together. So we were not worried about that at all. That's probably at the bottom of our, of our concerns. And I know it's a common thing for residents to wonder about, particularly if you live in a single-family home and you don't experience the apartment living on a daily basis, the buildings are full and doing well.
Well, and we're not unique in the nation, there's a housing shortage altogether, but I guess my question is about, did you run and understand what your competitors' occupancies are? Because you've got a lot of buildings that are three, four years old that are still not stabilized, so just trying to understand that particular point.
Yeah, we did. So in the buildings that were stabilized, we didn't see any laggards. Everybody was in the 85% to 97% range of occupancy.
And I think that's a great question, Commissioner, and I, you know, I remind people when we're working on developments is that we get an opportunity to discuss this with you tonight, but we have Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, France is a county road, the city council, but ultimately it all flows up to the Metropolitan Council. And I think that's a healthy reminder for all of us as residents and developers and commissioning bodies that ultimately there is a need for more housing in, in all communities, to your point. And so I think for some of the chatter on next door, Better Together, is a reminder that whether it's the Twin Cities or beyond, is that housing is a major concern in all major metropolitan areas.
This site is also unique relative to a lot of our competition in that it embraces France, it's sitting on France, it's not tucked back, you know, near Southdale or in any of the other neighborhoods, it's, it's right there on France. And so we thought that was an opportunity to be accessible and top of mind and in such close proximity to all of the, the neighborhood amenities, while at the same time being like a little quieter. And Commissioner Smith, you put it so well, you know, you have these kind of like two zones that you're transitioning into, and that's an opportunity, an asset that we have that we didn't take lightly. We knew that there's sensitivity as we do that transition, but it's something that we think our residents are going to be really excited about, and we think the neighborhood is going to be excited about too, because their transition now moves a lot more smoothly than it has historically with the office buildings and the parking garages that were in disrepair, and unfortunately the, you know, kind of hole in the ground as we, as we all see now, so.
I mean, Centennial Lakes used to be gravel pits, so maybe we have a history of wow developments out of pits. And I had mentioned this to Commissioner Teague at the beginning, there is some information in the traffic section of the Edina Comp Plan that speaks to road density around the Southdale District, and it doesn't match up with some of these studies that are being done by Santac or Kimble Horns. So I'd love to understand as a point for staff and just general clarification, how we think about those where you have the comp plan saying we're at or over capacity in certain roads and other private studies saying we're not.
I would need help with our city engineer to answer a question like that, the big-picture Southdale area. I know we've been trying to get Mr. Terhar to connect, I'm not sure if we've, he says he's heard everything and he's tried to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, yes.
Okay, I'm here from the ceiling. Yeah, your question about the comp plan, I did not work on the comp plan, but typically those are, traffic forecasts are far in the future, 2040 or 2050, so they look at future volumes, and if volumes continue to grow as they have in the past, there could be some capacity problems, but in the shorter term for this development, we're not at that point yet.
Just bringing that to the attention.
Sure.
More, more sort of esoteric, but as we're talking about Danila Plaza and, and the other Mr. Carlson's call for the wow factor, which I hear, I absolutely think you've created a wow factor for your residents and office tenants. If the pedestrian over-underpass does happen, and especially if it doesn't, I guess I'm wondering how you see the rest of the public interacting in this very large space that can feel, I think as one of the other commissioner members mentioned, like a private park for this, these two buildings. Somebody had mentioned food trucks, which would be on the backside of France. Have you in all of your iterations sort of discussed how you might invite people who are just driving by on France to be like, ooh, something is happening there and I want to go join?
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I, I would hesitate to say that we have the parking or capacity to accommodate what I would call maybe a, a public gathering, so I need to be cautious about that. I think it's designed to be more an area amenity that's walked or biked to for the neighborhood and/or to serve the residents or the office patrons with programming and amenities as needed.
Fair enough.
Is that fair?
Yep, fair enough, just, and then I guess I just really want to commend you guys for, I know, working with the city and the county and everything as you work through the overpass, and I'm sure the easements has been a challenge, so thank you for trying to, to work that through in your design. I'm sure as an architect, that's hard to design for if and situations. You guys have done a great job of preserving the trees. I know the neighbors were very concerned, you're 200 feet back and you have this beautiful wetlands in between. Every unit, it appears practically, has access to the outdoors, which is great for biophilic design and all of our, our livelihoods. I did want to question though, there seem to be about as many units that don't have balconies and that are alcoves as your affordable requirement, and I just wanted to make sure that that was not connected in any way.
Not connected. The vast majority, as you said, of our units have outdoor spaces, and the ones that don't basically can't.
Yeah, there's a corner, not go units.
They're sitting at a corner of the building where a balcony would intrude on somebody else's balcony, basically. So, yeah, those are not connected.
Great. And then last, and maybe this is sort of a joint question, we've, in your packet, we talked a lot about green roof and, and lead silver and some of these other amenities. How does that work in terms of what happens and is approved in the sketch plan ultimately to, as things get fine-tuned and you go through with the city, to what the final drawings are? You know, a lot of those are great public goods and part of the vision, I just don't know how those might get left on the cutting room floor.
I mean, you know, the first thing we do is we engage with staff and complete alignment and in some cases significantly enhanced from the sustainable policy. So I would offer to you from the development team on behalf of our team is that we will 100% meet the baseline of the Edina Sustainable Policy, and I'll let the experts talk about how much we may exceed that.
As someone who's developed, I understand that things happen over the course of the two years, I just want to make sure that some of these really great things end up being preserved as part of the vision.
I can add before, that's one of the conditions of approval, that they meet our sustainability policy, so they're meeting with Marissa Bayer, our Sustainability Coordinator, so we wouldn't issue a building permit unless they met that policy. So she's, she's involved at the building, you know, at this stage, all the way through building permit.
Will you talk a little bit about the, the inundation park? You've got a couple of pieces that go in there that people can hang out, will you describe those in detail?
Sorry, which, the park, which park?
On the, on the backside, on the west side of the, yes, as you go into the divot, hole in the ground.
Gravel pit.
Gravel pit. You, on the site plan, right, there's that one and there's another one on the corner, would you just describe those a little bit? Oh, the, where the truck is.
Let's go to the site plan. Yeah, it's taking a little while, there we go. Yeah, so there are a couple spots within this, I guess the main, the main idea of this is that we're trying to promote circulation through the site, but then along with circulation, the design anticipates moments of pause or stopping or gathering or reflection, and you can see a couple of these. One here is a, is a sort of overlook on the edge of that stormwater feature, so you have a little bit of prospect and you can look down and, and, and see the nature. Ted observed that there's a rafter of turkeys that must live nearby, so that might be a, that's the, yeah, a, a multiple, multiple, yeah, that's the, that's the plural of turkeys is a rafter, I don't know why I know that. And then here, there's another spot, so at the, you know, on access with Danila, which could be visible as you're, as you're walking by or biking by on France, maybe not as you're driving by, there is a spot here for a food truck or two to park, and it's anticipated, I think, that that would be part of the programming of, of combination of the office building and, and the residential building, probably a better amenity for office building where people are definitely there for lunch.
Yeah, we have great success programming different food trucks and ice cream trucks at our commercial properties.
That's a great thing.
I'm suspecting that the apartment residents would also partake, but currently we don't have office buildings with a combined apartment project.
And how wide is that sidewalk between the two?
Danila Plaza?
No, no.
Oh, the sidewalks?
Between the truck parking and the little overlook.
Oh, got it.
And the, and the overlook. And the overlook is in a very public corner too. So I'm sure would invite people into that space. Yeah. The one, yeah, and the public access new street.
The sidewalk?
Yeah.
I believe this one is 12 feet.
Okay. And then does it continue on south or is that?
It does, it does not. So the route is connecting from 72nd to Danila and then east to France.
Okay. So you dump onto the street then?
Yeah, there is a way that you could circulate here adjacent to the office building. There is a sidewalk here that is, that is immediately adjacent to the office building. And then this is that switchback accessible route that we talked about. And then, and then you can see, just to point out some of the features. So the 7250s amenities are all located in this corner facing Danila. There's some outdoor spaces where anyone could gather, but ideally probably mostly the office tenants. And, you know, someone could come into this coffee shop, could be someone from the residential building, it could be someone just on their bike. And they could come into this coffee shop. They could, they could take something to go. They could hang out on this front porch if that's what, if that's what they want to do. So these spaces are all going to be dedicated and open to the public.
And a 12-foot sidewalk would allow someone, like a couple with a stroller and someone adjacent to them, right? The more gadgets we have. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Elkhayer.
Thanks for the presentation. Really excited to see the shared amenities, particularly the parking between the two sides of the building. For, excuse me, between the two buildings. Because I understand that Phase Two, 7200, is going to provide some of the parking requirement for the commercial building, which is fantastic. On 7200, the building we're talking about tonight, no surface parking, also fantastic. But for, for my education, maybe our education, but particularly my education, because I'm asking the question, maybe everybody else knows this already. We often hear that for multifamily, got to have some surface parking for visitors, got to have 15 stalls for visitors, can't do without it. But you don't have any. So operationally, I'm driving up to this building to see my friend. I got a car. How is this accomplished?
Actually, the, so the, it's a good question. The parking for the office building that's going to be supplied in 7200 is all in a single level at street level that is accessed from 72nd Street. And so the nice thing is that the lower two levels of parking, which will be for the residents, are able to be secured and they will have to enter with credentials. But Level One parking is intended as a more transient user. So not only office tenants, but also potential resident guests or prospects. And one of the reasons why that works really well is that obviously the demand for office parking is during the day, nine to five. Demand for guest parking is overwhelmingly in the evening. So it's a really nice way to accommodate all of these users and welcome these people to the site without having to build parking that sits vacant for, you know, 16 hours a day.
Absolutely. One of the benefits of commercial residential mixed use, we don't have a lot of that in Adina. So happy to see, happy to see it here. So basically I drive off 72nd Street and there's some visitor spots and I just, I'm set.
Correct. And the details of that aren't worked out. It could be that it's just, there could be some spots reserved for resident guests or it may be more informal.
Yeah, I can offer examples of where that is in our city today. It'd be at Nolan Maines where you've got the public parking. The doors open in the summer and it's closed in winter and it's censored and goes up. Same with the Orient at 44th and France.
Great. So I think you're going to manage this building after it's done also, or is somebody else going to be doing that?
We would have a third-party management company do it. It was also a project partner.
Okay. So would somebody, some other entity would be setting parking policy for residents? Like whether the, whether the parking is separate or included in the rent? Is that not your call?
The parking is going to be à la carte. It's not going to be included in the rent.
Great.
So enable residents to elect to park at their demand level.
Great. Thank you. Last thing, would you just say a few words about the north-south street that's not a street? Because I feel like the last time we talked about 7250 or one of the times we talked about 7250, we had some conversations about bike and pet experience along the north-south. And it sounds like we got sidewalks, we got some pet facilities around the, around the water feature, but that the street itself is a vehicular route. Is that, am I thinking about that correctly?
Yes, Commissioner Elkhayer, are you thinking about that correctly? And I would actually ask Director Teague to help weigh in on this because we've had a lot of conversation with city engineering and staff about how to design the street.
And when 7250 was approved, there were several conditions for modifying that north-south street, including narrowing it, getting rid of a median and making it more dedicated to autos. And so those, those conditions have been, have been applied to the site plan now.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess while we're on this, while we're on this page, so now I'm getting confused by this, by the trail on the left-hand side. Because my understanding, you know, from the previous, from the 7250 project, and it looks like it here, is that the path continues all the way south, the pedestrian bicycle path. Is that not, and you said it didn't. So I'm confused. So there's a row of trees on the left-hand side of the property, the 7250, and then there's a space there, which looks like a trail to me, to the left, yeah, just to the left of that, yes. So is that a trail or no?
I don't believe it is. I don't believe it is.
I'm going to slightly disagree with you.
Okay, all right.
It is.
Ted has more experience with 7250 than I do.
We do.
Okay.
I think the differentiator, Commissioner Miranda, is that I believe our sidewalk coming up 7250 is not ADA compliant.
Which sidewalk?
The sidewalk coming up 7250, which is why we can also come up through Danila Plaza.
Not sure I understand that.
I think he's referring to the sidewalk that's right next to the building of the 7250.
Oh, that one. Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. So...
This has gone, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be elusive. It's literally gone through probably 100 iterations, so.
Sure. So, okay, so just to be clear, on the left-hand side along the property line, that is a trail?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to hear. So, so that is, all right, so, so some of my biggest concerns are the connection of the Nine Mile Creek Trail, which is, you know, just south of here, to the bridge or tunnel or whatever's going to happen, which presumably would be happening through Danila Plaza, I guess. So as someone who was walking with another commissioner the other day and got haunted by a motorist because I was crossing at a legal crosswalk, which was not marked, is any kind of, is any kind of traffic coming going to be done in that gray area where Danila meets the street? So would that be like a raised crosswalk, for example?
Yes. I don't know. I know it's a different material type and likely identified on the ground, but I don't know that it's raised.
Because, I mean, because you've got a very long street. And I think part of the reason why perhaps, you know, city council members were asking for a narrower street was, you know, you've got a very long street that's, what, two blocks long basically there? And I live on a street that's two blocks long. And believe me, cars build up speed if there's no stop sign or anything else to stop them. And, you know, if we're, if the whole idea is to get people to use a million-dollar bridge or tunnel or whatever, they're going to want to feel safe. The whole point of creating this tunnel or this bridge is to make people feel safe. And if they don't feel safe getting to it on this little side street, then we've destroyed the entire purpose of it. And we've spent millions of dollars on something that people are not going to use. They're just going to cross at France Avenue, right? Which is what people do in Minneapolis, even though the Sabo Bridge is all pretty and everything. People just want to cross the street, so they just cross there. Anyway, I really, I would almost recommend, anyway. So I think that should be, should be elevated. I mean, you know, these exist. They're, what do they call them? Streets?
Tabled.
No, tables. Thank you. Yes, tables. Thank you. So I think a table there would be very good. I mean, it wouldn't slow cars down that much, but I think it would be very safe. All right. All right. So that got that out. And then was there ever a sidewalk on the east side of that street? Or was this, was the trail created to obviate the need for that?
There is not a sidewalk on the east side. The sidewalk, as you come up through the plaza, then connects to the entrance and the amenities of the office building. And then it connects north to south along the office building.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then if you go to the diagram where they, you had the, you called it the front porch, the residence is facing the, yeah, there was one more, I think. This one, yeah. So, I mean, this is a great idea. And if this were along, you know, kind of like the, shoot, what's that building called? Along the promenade, you know, this would be really wonderful. And that, it would look a lot like that. But, you know, you've got six to eight lanes of 45 mile an hour traffic just, you know, just to the west of here. So this is not only dangerous, but it's going to be noisy, extremely noisy, especially with a, you know, a building behind it. So, so this is a nice diagram, but I just don't know that it's really going to turn out like that. And then my final thing was, is in terms of the ground floor height. And this is something I've brought up many times. And I know the city has been trying really hard to lower this height, even though it's been in the Design Experience Guidelines. I'll quote page 16 of the Design Experience Guidelines that were approved by the city council, where it says, "Building form," and it says, "Ground floors should have a minimum ceiling height of 20 feet for flexibility. And this floor-to-floor height will allow the space to accommodate commercial, two floors of parking, or two-story townhouses." So a few points about that. One, you know, there are questions, for example, by Commissioner Smith about, you know, what that height actually is. So whatever, I'm not an architect, but whatever fits two floors of parking or two-story townhouses, and commercial would certainly fit that. And so you want to reduce it two feet compared to the previous proposal, which included commercial. So it was at least, the 16 feet was at least high enough, that's what we were, right, 16, was enough, was high enough to accommodate commercial. You know, and, you know, there's talk about, about climate action and sustainability and stuff. So the thing is, this building's going to be here for 30 years, 50 years, whatever. So what we've seen, for example, with COVID, is that, you know, five years ago, office space was really important, and especially in the Southdale District. And now it has been completely eviscerated, right? There's like no need for it or whatever. So the whole point of this regulation and suggestion is to make sure that if, you know, and, and suddenly with the need for housing and affordable housing, that housing is huge now in the Southdale District. So the Southdale District in the past 10 years, what's been good for this district has completely turned around 180 degrees. And that's the whole point of this, right? And this has happened in 10 years. And, you know, COVID isn't necessarily over and we potentially have, you know, a bird flu, whatever, coming, which may be our next thing to deal with. So who knows what's going to happen in the future. And so, you know, saying, so having, keeping the higher height for flexibility, I think, is more important for sustainability than it is, you know, saving two feet of HVAC costs for a few years or whatever. So, so I think that's really important. And I think that's something that I'm going to push for here.
If you don't mind.
Is that going to change, is that going to change whether you do the project or not? Whether it's 14 feet or 16 feet?
If, if this were 16 feet, then the building would either have to be taller than 72 feet or we would simply sort of squash everything and make the top of the building a little less articulated. I guess what I would point out is, you know, I am familiar with those Design Experience Guidelines and the reasons stated for 20 feet. And, and you're right, it states so that could, there could be two floors of parking or that there could be two-story apartments. I think it is almost impossible that if a building were built, that someone would later insert a level of parking inside, like, like...
Sure.
I mean, and I would also say that, that 14 feet, floor-to-floor, does yield an 11 to 11 and a half foot ceiling. And that is plenty for almost all commercial, maybe for everything other than a Cub Foods or a Super Target. So we do a lot of vertical mixed use. And 14 feet is a very common floor-to-floor height that can accommodate restaurants, small retail, coffee shops, all sorts of those things. So I, I think the 20 feet, it does make sense if you're trying to sandwich two levels of parking within a very gracious first floor. I've learned through doing some projects that 20 feet floor-to-floor is actually not enough to do a two-story apartment or housing. It needs to be more like 22. But 14 feet is a really nice floor height that will give you a very gracious ceiling and accommodate almost any public use.
Okay. Well, if it's good for commercial, I mean, I'm not expecting two-story condos or, or a parking ramp to go there. But, but it was more about commercial space. And you requested 16 before, so I thought that would be necessary.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're boxing ourselves out of, out of any future conversion here. The building itself isn't large enough to accommodate a big box store, which is the only one that might want more, more, more height. And we're preserving the beauty of the building. So having that height articulation on the top floor, we think is going to add a lot to the public and just kind of visual interest as people are either walking up and down France or driving up and down France. And we're also preserving the ability to attractively market these residential units on the second through the sixth floor. Because if we started to squish that down because we moved the first floor up, we now have much less desirable residential units, which is the vast majority of the use of the building. So we thought this was kind of best of both worlds. We build less concrete, which is very environmentally intensive and expensive. We still get desirable ceiling heights for residential units and heights that are tall enough to, in the future, convert to commercial. And we keep the building below a height that would trigger another request to the city.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
So just to add to that point, so if the building went up two feet, you're saying that's not going to be aesthetically pleasing when you look at the two buildings? Is that kind of the concern that you, that you raised?
No, if the building went up two feet, we think that's reasonable. It's just it adds cost that we don't think has a corresponding benefit right now. Because in the future, let's say that, you know, your observation, Commissioner Miranda, about, you know, maybe these units are too loud and they're less desirable than we think they are. We think they're going to lease and we think they're maybe going to be some of the more popular units in the building. But let's say that we're wrong or the market changes and there's some kind of shock to the system. And we decide we want to come back to the city and propose converting this area to commercial. The ceiling's already high enough to do that. We don't need the additional two feet to convert it to a commercial. So it basically wasn't adding anything to the site besides unnecessary cost, which is why we proposed taking it out.
And frankly, I think taking it out, the resident comment earlier, what we all like is, adds a little wow factor with additional design up top. Fair?
Yep. Yeah.
This question is more for Director Teague. I know with added buildings, any concerns with water, sewer, anything of that nature in this area? Because I know this part of the city had a concern with sewer flow and the need to upgrade to accommodate new buildings. Just any comments you could, you could share on that?
Yeah, I don't, there's no sewer capacity issues in this area and the...
Yeah, I don't, there are no sewer capacity issues in this area, and the stormwater drainage with what's proposed on the west side, our engineers have reviewed it. So no issues that I'm, that we're aware of.
All right, I got, I got just one. After all that, I think most of the questions were asked, but thank you guys for the, the presentation. Beautiful looking proposal. I guess just process-wise, I guess Carrie alluded to it. Why did you choose to forego going through the sketch plan and, you know, not committing so much resource and kind of getting this thing so dialed in? What, why did, why did you choose to forego that in the process, if it was available?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think it was a function of taking the sketch plan through that we felt was not very well received with the potential hospitality, and working within the guidelines of the approved PUD for projects was really well-defined. So I think in the interest of efficiency and, and just fiscal responsibility, working within the confines of what we agreed upon, that this was a logical and efficient way to pursue this process.
Okay. I guess I'd just maybe recommend otherwise going forward, we, we tend, I mean, I'd say almost every project at this kind of juncture, we do see a sketch plan without so many of the details. So if there is something, even if it's little, or maybe a little more substantial, it's not so locked in so that we can get you in the rights, you know, the right more approvable step after that. So I guess that would just be my recommendation. And I guess for that, there's just, you know, a couple of things I have comments on later that I don't know are deal breakers, but I feel like the project suffers a little bit if we have to approve this in its exist, in its specific fashion right now. And that's just the point of the process why I was asking. Any other questions? All right, thank you, guys. Oh, wait, we got one more.
Sorry for all these popcorn questions here. Art. I know we wanted to have the wow factor, and I think that's going to come in a much bigger scale as we look at the entire street room on France. But tell me a little bit more about how you guys plan to infuse art into these spaces, make it some attractive points throughout the city. I did see on some of these, like this one here, you had something, but anything else that you get out about art in these spaces?
Well, I can add that in the projects we've done in the past, we've committed to $100,000 worth of public art on this site. And we worked with a local artisan to create sculpture and place it in a coordination with landscape architect and with city staff to their review and approval. So what we can provide now is that, you know, the dollar amount, and then provide input on where we in the Cullin Saltins think it's best received and best presented.
All right, I think that's it. All right, now, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, stick around, obviously, after the public hearing, you know, we might have some more questions as we deliberate. But this is the public hearing portion of the meeting, so we will open that. And for those who are still tuning in remotely, we'll give you a chance to get in the queue. While you do that, then we'll invite people who are here in person to come forward and speak. But for those tuning in, again, please call 312-535-8110 and enter access code 2632-2058054. The password is 5454. Press star three on your keypad to get in the queue to speak. I'm sure some of this info is on the screen, right? We can't see it, but.
So what I was just saying to Commissioner Bennett was that before we get to community comment, I wanted to make it clear to people what exactly the ask in front of planning commission is tonight. Right, so we have, as Commissioner Teague referred to, very little leeway. We're not being asked to rezone this. It's already been rezoned. It's already been approved to be PUD. The overall development plan, pretty much 150 unit building, everything, was approved in October of 2022 already, right? And so what we're asked to be do is they, this site plan basically align with what was already approved in 2022, and will we grant the variance for the height, for the height change? That's it. I mean, we really have no grounds to say we're not going to be rezoning to PUD, because that's not the question. And, I mean, to, in my mind, right, essentially, my personal opinion on this project carries little weight, because it's already been approved, right? On October, October 22. So I just want to make sure that residents understand that, because I did get a lot of questions about that. Where are we in the process? Are we being asked to rezone, or what are we doing here tonight? I wanted to make sure that that was clear before we, you know, got into the community comment part of this.
Yeah, great distinction. Anything else to add, Carrie?
Nope, I believe that was well done.
Great. All right, so for those tuning in remotely, just hold tight. We will invite those who are here in person to come up and speak. You have three minutes. State your full name, address, and when it turns red, your time's up. I'll ask you to move on. Yeah, there should be a camera with, should be the, the center of the logo.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Carlson. I live at 4433 Ellsworth Drive, and I am not a relative of Ted Carlson. Tonight I'm here, and I'm a little disheartened to give these remarks, but I think they're necessary. When I read through the City of Edina staff report included with the agenda for this meeting, I was dismayed or perhaps baffled to see that the most important information to the residents of our neighborhood was not included in your information packet. That is, the transition zone discussed in the Greater Southville District area guidelines. I thought to myself, how could that be, how could that be missed? Why isn't it there? So I asked my husband, I said, you know, could you review this report? And he didn't find any reference to the transition zone in the referenced, in the Greater Southville area guidelines. And it's disturbing that I had to ask the city staff to include a discussion of something so important to our neighborhood. We spent many hours hashing over what should be included in the guidelines, and particularly the transition zone, and even met with city council members in my kitchen. I do not think you could possibly make a good decision tonight without having this information provided. And I don't think that a resident should have to ask that this be provided to you, because it's very basic information. So I just feel that having to intervene, intervene here really just kind of showed disrespect to our neighborhood, that this information was not provided upfront to the planning commission. I also want to clarify with you that an apartment building has not previously been approved for this site under Orion, no ownership. The notice of public meeting published in The Sun Current on July 11th has created confusion in our, our neighborhood, leading some residents to think that an apartment building has already been approved. And I think this is still very unclear to people as to exactly what has and hasn't been approved for this site, and what will be approved possibly by the city council here on August 7th. And I believe emails between myself, the city council, and the city staff have been provided to you to help clarify this point. And it is my understanding that the approval of this plan will approve the apartment building for the site. Now, switching to another topic, I, I can't think of anywhere in Edina where a building of this height has been built next to residential homes. Here's a picture of a home next to the six-story building, the Aria. I doubt you would want a building like this next to your home, but it does, does give an idea of the scale of this apartment building compared to single-family homes. This is a picture of a resident in the Lake Cornelia area from their backyard. This is the 4040 building at 70th Street. And you can see this four-story building just completely destroys their privacy and their backyard. I believe that the building that is proposed is too high for our area. It does not comply with the transition zone. It is actually totally out of scope for something backing up to a residential area. And I know I have three minutes, but I sat here for an hour, two hours and 15 minutes to get a chance to speak. You cannot pick and choose what guidelines apply to a project. The transition zone between our neighborhood and the Southville District must be maintained. It's very important to us. An infiltration base and does not meet the spirit and intent of the Design Experience Guidelines, which are articulated in very clearly. There is just too much confusion regarding what is going on with this site and what is being requested to be approved. Therefore, I am asking that you disapprove this and state that the apartment is not consistent with the overall site plan because of all of the confusion that exists right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for wrapping up. Appreciate it. All right. Same thing, three minutes, full name, address. Welcome again.
Good evening. My name is Nora Davis. I live at 6921 Southdale Road, the Lake Cornelia neighborhood, and the 4040 project is in my backyard. Learned a lot about development through this whole process. And one of my concerns is I haven't heard anybody talk about how these developments impact the neighborhood. There really hasn't been a lot of discussion tonight about traffic. How are people going to get there? Well, I know they're going to be whipping up 70th. They're not going to go all the way to France Avenue around the roundabout, which, by the way, is often clogged. And by the way, 70th Street is often backed up to Highway 100. I don't know if you often use 70th, but you do need to try it. So they're going to very quickly learn. I shoot down 70th, I make a right turn onto Cornelia Drive, pass the school, make a left turn on 72nd, and race down that road. And that's a residential neighborhood, and nobody has talked about that. That is a very serious impact for that neighborhood. I hear Edina talking about missing middle, and I hear Edina talking about, oh my gosh, climate change. Yesterday was the hottest day we've seen as of yet. I volunteered for the Hennepin County Urban Heat Island Project. And we are developing one massive heat island in the Southdale area. Trees are being taken down. You go down France Avenue now, they have removed grass, they have removed trees. And I don't know why anyone would feel comfortable walking down France Avenue. They're going 40 to 50 miles an hour. I can hear the drag racing from my home on Southdale Road. So I think we need to start looking at impact, and it needs to be part of the process. And I think we also need to look very carefully at renderings. They are always so beautiful. The beautiful trees, the green space. We were told 4040 would have more green space after they took everything up with this massive building. Makes no sense. We have to start looking at the truth. We have to start being concerned about the people that live here, the families that are already here. Let's start talking about that missing middle, and let's start being respectful and truthful to people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, David Frankel, 4510 Lakeview Drive. I seem to have become the unofficial ADA advocate in this building, and I'm not sure why. You know, we have people on staff that are supposed to do it, but seem to say it's ADA compliant, that's good enough. The reality is, every proposal should have an ADA component, should be up front and center. Is this particular project ADA compliant? I didn't hear ADA in the last two hours. Last two hours, nothing about Americans with Disabilities Act, and I won't go into the details of that. The other thing is, roughly from 66th Street to 494 on France Avenue on the west side, none of that's ADA compliant. I bike and walk it all the time. It's a frickin' disaster. And I've talked to Hennepin County about it, they won't touch it. They don't have anything on their proposals to do anything about it. Which comes to, the issue earlier was brought up, why isn't transportation and planning in the discussions about a bridge or tunnel, or whatever you want to call it, on France Avenue? France Avenue, as was mentioned, is controlled by Hennepin County and has to meet MINDOT standards. I've talked to Hennepin County Engineering, and they say there's just no way that's going to happen to go underneath France Avenue. There's too much infrastructure down there. The only reason they'll negotiate, because they won't pay a nickel to do anything. If Edina wants to spend a lot of money, and I mean a lot of money, because nobody knows how much it's going to cost. Has anybody asked the question, how much is the bridge going to cost? How much is the tunnel going to cost? How much are two bridges going to cost? Nobody knows, yet we're moving forward with that. You said this project was already proposed. It was already approved, yet it was approved without this tunnel, bridge, whatever. So are we going to come back later and say to this developer, you got to put this bridge in here? And they're going to say, we're taking you to court. That's what's called a surprise. Are we going to get a surprise out of this project, because we didn't ask the tough questions? The holding pond on this project, whatever you want to call it, park, marsh, wetland, under state TIF guidelines, you cannot use TIF money for a park, period. That was because of Centennial Lakes. TIF was designed for economic development, not to build parks. I love parks, but that wasn't the intention of this funding. So the question should be, what is the overflow going to go to when there's a large downfall, which we've been getting lately with climate change? Go down to Minnehaha Creek, it's already starting to go over at Spanx and Arden Park. What happens when there's flooding in this project? Where's the overflow going to be? You know what the surprise is? We were never told when they built the holding pond at Weber Woods, the overflow was the Minneapolis stormwater system. If you go down to Lake Bedia Makaska today, tonight, tomorrow, our water is overflowing the holding ponds at Lake Bedia Makaska. We didn't tell the Minneapolis Park Board about that, and they got stuck with it, and we're flooding their holding ponds, which can't overflow into an already, already high Lake Bedia Makaska. So there are issues going on here that, you know, we talked about the wall, the wall factor, it's not about these buildings. I call it the surprise factor. I try to follow what goes on in the city, and I get broadsided occasionally. Didn't you know that? It was buried somewhere. We got to stop that by asking the right questions all the time. And that includes the Americans with Disabilities Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, looks like we got another person here.
Yeah, good evening. Kevin Oak, 7305 Cornelia Drive. So I live on the street that Nora was just talking about, where traffic cuts through from 100, or from 70th down to Cornelia, over on 72nd Street, where we're dumping all this traffic on this development onto. The point I wanted to make is, there's no right, there's no way to go north from 72nd onto France. So all that traffic is going to go towards the neighborhood, coming in or leaving that development. So that's something that's got to be addressed, right? Because there's already heavier traffic than, you know, in the 20 years I've, I've lived there, with people cutting off 70th down Cornelia in front of the school, than heading eastbound on 72nd Street. So the, the in and out off of 72nd Street is the issue that I've got, right? And so, you know, I, I appreciate very much that we got rid of the, the, the retail aspect, the, that kind of stuff. I think that's the right direction. But the, the concern that I've got, and I think most of my neighbors, right, is, is just that traffic flow that's dumping on from traffic flow that's dumping on from this property, right, onto 72nd. If we can get them onto Gallagher, there's an intersection, right, it's traffic-controlled, better. But anything coming out of that place, it's either going to go westbound on 72nd, up to Cornelia, and on 70th Street to get to 100, or it's going to go up Lynn Mar to get to Hazleton, to then go northbound on France. So that's just what I want to make sure that we consider that as part of, because this is, you know, I think this is the right direction. We need to have something there, but it's just that traffic flow that's my concern. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here in person I'd like to testify, please come up. Seeing none, and it's been maybe 10 minutes or so, do we have anyone in the queue?
No, we don't.
I think we're good to move on from that. All right, I guess I'd welcome a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moves, public hearing is closed. Taken it back to the planning commission to deliberate, I guess. Who wants to spark the conversation? We could go down in line, unless we have questions for each other. I mean, are there any questions that have come up?
No.
Okay, all right.
Lou's got one.
All right, are there any, no. All right, Lou.
Well, I'd like to start by addressing some of the points that were just brought up recently by people who were here. Oh, well, they're gone. So one of them is the transition zone, right? So they talked about the transition zone, and this is in the Southdale, sorry, this is in the Southdale Experience Guidelines. And so I'm reading from page 21, and it's literally talking about this area, so the West Promenade. And so it says, "As illustrated in the section above, with this transition zone, building heights will step up incrementally from those that are adjacent to single-family homes." Right? So this happened in our neighborhood, Commissioner Felt in my neighborhood, at Sunnyside at France by a project by Mr. Carlson, where the Lorient has, and you were on the small area plan there. So the Lorient actually is adjacent to single-family homes, and it steps down to the height of single-family homes. So this project has this big gap between, well, they're not here anymore, but this project has a big gap, which is the pond, or whatever, whatever that's called. So in a previous iteration of this plot, you know, there was talk about having buildings there that were, you know, smaller in height. So the thing is, nothing is being built next to a single-family home with this project. So in terms of the transition zone, I believe this is meeting the essence of the requirement for that. The other things that were brought up, you know, local traffic. So there's something in transportation called induced demand. So if you're worried about congestion, and you build more lanes, and you widen a street or whatever, then you induce demand, and you get more traffic there than you had before. So, you know, building more streets, and I don't think anyone wants to widen 70th Street anyway, but building more streets, building more lanes, encouraging more traffic is not the way to go. Another topic that was brought up was missing middle. And missing middle is something that doesn't really belong in Southdale, or at least most of Southdale. So Southdale, even more so than our other commercial districts, is, you know, we have our cute little downtown, which is 50th and France, and then we have like our downtown, downtown, business downtown, and that's Southdale. And that is our one place, especially between France and York, where we can build, you know, significantly tall buildings and not be anywhere near a single-family home, or have anything that's, you know, inappropriate to a small neighborhood. So, so missing middle is something that you would want, you know, at the edges of our, where we have our small area plans, so 44th and France, 50th and France, that sort of thing. At the very edges of that, and that's sort of like a transition zone, where you have housing that fits two families, three families, four families, five or six families, something like that. And so again, that, on France Avenue, you know, that's, missing middle is not really appropriate between Highway 62 or the crosstown and, you know, the south end of Edina on France Avenue. So it's not really appropriate there. It is appropriate in other places in the city, and we do need to build it, and we're not. You know, in terms of climate change, you know, she mentioned that there was, we just had the hottest day on the planet, which was preceded by the hottest day on the planet. So yes, that's a huge issue, and we do need to address that. And we need to address, you know, a housing issue we have in the city and in the metro area, and in the entire country, actually. And the way you address climate change is by building more density and having more people in an area, so that you're not continually building into the exurbs and taking more farmland and more, more green space and more forests and converting them into single-family homes. So we are addressing climate change by doing projects like these. So, and they do have lots of trees, and the city requires that, so there's plenty of green space there. So I think that addresses some of the concerns that came up.
Mr. Teague, is there a traffic consultant still on? I probably don't know his name, so I can't ask him.
Yes, I believe he is.
The voice of God.
Yes. Question about, or the testimony from the public hearing about the left turn or the northbound turn on, to France Avenue from 72nd Street. I had not realized that that was not currently possible. And the main entrance and exit to the 7200 France Avenue ramp is going to be onto 72nd Street. And I can easily see how if I was trying to get to Route 100 or anywhere to the east, or excuse me, to the west of here, I would be sorely tempted to drive right through our one neighborhoods. I wonder if, are there suggestions that you could be made, that you could make or that we should study to improve the likelihood, improve the access to France Avenue northbound and southbound from 72nd Street that would reduce impacts on the, on the single-family homes to the west?
Well, access to southbound France is immediate.
Yes.
On 72nd Street. So that's not an issue. In my opinion, the connection that's being constructed between 72nd and Gallagher is the shortest distance to get to France Avenue. I don't know why anyone would go west around the block to go to the north on France. I mean, this is a short distance to get to Gallagher, which is a signal to go north on France. Some people may go to the west. It's very similar, probably less traffic, in my opinion, than the existing or the previous office building that was there. That building had two access points on 72nd and generated more traffic than this development. So currently, there is no traffic doing that, because there's nothing in this location. But if you compare what was there before to what is being proposed, the traffic will be less. So there's, there's going to be some traffic that goes west, and that was studied in multiple iterations before, when there were, you know, other developments proposed for this project that were higher generating, and there were issues, and there were questions about, could we cut off 72nd Street? Can we make it a dead end? You know, there were many things that were discussed. But it's, in the, you know, in the, in the end, it is a public street. People are allowed to use it. But in my opinion, it will be less impact, this development, than there was with the previous office building.
Okay, so you're saying daily trips in the proposed plan for 7200 and 7250 will be less than it was 10 years ago? Or what, in the prior use of that land?
Yes.
Hey, Carrie, maybe you could clarify again. I know Commissioner Day did a good job beforehand, but coming more directly from staff. And I think maybe, again, part of my recommendation for a sketch plan, that could have served as a buffer to kind of ease some confusion from residents, as well as like potential naysayers of the project. But what exactly was approved as part of the PUD?
The PUD, so it was rezoned to PUD, and there was a list of uses that are permitted on the site. That includes uses allowed in the PCD II district, that was to cover the retail, multifamily apartments, and a hotel. So those became permitted uses for both sites. There was a height regulation established within that ordinance at 72 feet. You know, there were setbacks all around. So we're really, the review before the planning commission this evening, is a site plan review comparing this project and how it stacks up to those requirements in the PUD 16 district. The one item that they don't meet with this project is that first-floor building height. But you, so you're asked to do a site plan review, essentially. The difference with the PUD in that, with the PUD, we incorporate a specific site plan into the ordinance. So because there was no site plan approved for Phase II, we needed to amend the ordinance under either circumstances, just to insert the site plan within it. But there's not a lot of discretion here, because they do comply with the height, the setback, and the uses are permitted.
So it's fair to say, apartment building wasn't approved, but any one of those number of things that conforms with the current codes could be built?
Correct. Yep. By law. Yep. But you still have the ability to review the site plan and add conditions if it's to minimize impacts, those types of things, landscaping.
Is that clear? Okay. I guess I just turn it over to any other questions or clarifications. Yeah? Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, you know, just to, just to add to that, one of the other concerns, and I think it's, it's so useful and great for residents to attend in person and bring up their concerns, and even go on, go online or dial into these calls. I know it's kind of late, but this kind of feedback is super valuable. Now, the, the PUD zoning, just to be clear, right, that doesn't bypass any ADA requirements that buildings have to have, right? So I think that's state law, right? So a building, the inside, how it's designed, that has to be ADA compliant overall. And so hopefully that addresses the internal structure. Now, externally, on the actual land itself, I'm assuming here that it also doesn't preclude, like, us to bypass any ADA requirements, like, when it comes to sidewalks or spaces. And so I'm just trying to, you know, share this with residents, that ADA compliance is something that we have to comply with for any development, internally to the building and externally. Now, clearly, right, there have, there have been some concerns with bridges that have been built in a city that now they're under investigation, but maybe that's some specific unique cases that maybe is outside of maybe some building items. I'm not familiar with that case, but overall, I think we are meeting ADA compliance when it comes to spaces around the building and spaces within the building. The other point that was raised was on TIF financing. And this has always been one of those tricky things for me personally, because we look at zoning, we look at building, we look at design, we might request new things, right? And the developer goes back, and then they say, could we financially meet this or not? If not, we have to reach out to the city, right, for some kind of support. And the, the housing authority, I forgot the actual name of the group, but they would look at that request, compare what the requirements are, and determine whether or not TIF financing is appropriate for that build. And I'm sure there's a set of rules and regulations around that. But essentially, the TIF question is outside of the planning commission, and it's something that a different body looks at. And so, you know, we could certainly bring it up here, and residents could certainly bring it up here in these public forums, but just to make that distinction, that we have no control or influence over how the financing of, of buildings go, versus looking at design, and does it meet design guidelines for the city.
Correct. And this project has already received TIF.
Yeah, just start with comments. Anyone, I guess anyone else have any questions for the development team, or any? All right, yeah, let's just go down with comments, and then if it's appropriate to put forth a motion, let's do it. I don't have too many, but I'll just share a few thoughts. I didn't have a lot of difficulty with this project. I feel really good about it, and I commend you for your work. I think about, you know, what are, what are we creating for our city here? And we're creating a really great place to live. I mean, it's a particularly strong location, place I'd like to live, with a lot of green space to the west, access to grocery, entertainment, coffee, all the stuff we have built in Southdale over the past couple decades. Hopefully, the underpass or the bridge, or whatever it ends up being, it happens, I think that would only increase the value of this particular location. Be a fantastic place to live. And that's what we're about, just trying to make new fantastic places for, for Edinans to live. I'm particularly excited about the shared amenities between residential and commercial. That's a rarity in our city. I want to see more of that and more of that, and I'm happy to start here, especially the parking. I don't have any conditions to add to this. I'm sure there's some things that could make it better, but I think it's really good. And this wow business, I mean, I totally agree with the sentiment in the article or in the letter. Our building should be wow, that's what we're aiming for. I do have a really hard time knowing what that means and acting on that coaching. For me, this is wow, but I know that other people will have a totally different viewpoint of it. But it looks really nice to me. It's a place I'd be comfortable living, and I'm, I'm happy to have your work to try to create this place in Edina.
Okay, let me just address some of the concern, or a concern from the Better Together Edina, where a number of people said that, you know, this doesn't meet the Design Experience Guidelines. And I think, in a large part, it does, probably from what I said before about the transition zone. But also, you know, before I joined the commission, there was a proposal near here, I don't think it was this site, but near here, to have a 20-story tower, two 20-something story towers on the west side of France, right? I don't think this is the place for that, right? So, and the Design Experience Guidelines are pretty, you know, intent on that, that, you know, east of France and west of York seems to be a better place for those sort of things. So we certainly don't want 20-story towers, but a six-story building just doesn't seem terribly out of place here. If you, if you think about 50th and France, where the wonderful Nolan Mainz was built, you know, that is closer, single-family homes are closer to that building than to any building here, and this is a much denser area. So, so I think that it seems perfectly acceptable to me. Another thing is that, well, Chair Bennett said we should have had a sketch plan, but because we're just approving a site plan, I mean, would a sketch plan even really make sense? I mean, I don't know if that would make sense. I'm just an offhand comment. I don't want to get debated about it or anything, but it seems like, you know, and to Carrie's point, or, I'm sorry, to Director of Planning, you know, I'll point out that this is the second time that we've approved a PUD. And the other time was also a project for Mr. Carlson at 70th and France, the bank, US Bank, where, and I guess I didn't really understand this about PUDs before, but, you know, where, because we're approving the PUD, we're basically approving changed spot zoning, right, for this thing. But I always assumed that the site plan went with the PUD, and that if the site plan wasn't built, then the PUD kind of was null and void or whatever. But apparently, that's not the case. And so it seems weird to me, this process seems very weird to me, because it's like we are almost encouraging developers to, I mean, granted, it's, it adds a lot of expense, and I don't think this is a primary motivation, but, you know, if you want to get a greater density in an area, as a developer, you could present a, a beautiful, wonderful project, kind of like what we saw at 70th and France, that had affordable housing and all this wonderful stuff, and then come back later and propose this wonderful stuff, and then come back later and propose, you know, fourteen-story parking or whatever that was proposed. And that didn't go through luckily, but, or the same situation here where our hands are kind of tied. We don't really have a lot of leeway in what we can approve or not approve because we're just approving a site plan. So I think that's a, it's nothing I can, we can do about this particular project, but I think it's a weakness in the city's process. In terms of this particular project, I do think, like Commissioner Alkire, I think in many ways it's a nice project. I mean, it, it looks really nice. It's, it's the right size for this part of the Southdale district. I mean, I wouldn't even mind a couple of stories taller, but, you know, it's, it's approved for seventy-two feet. This is a, a really good use of that space. And, you know, housing is important, you know, yeah. So overall, I think it's, it's a good project. My, my real concern is this whole connecting across Seventieth with the bike way and making sure that, you know, we're not creating too convoluted a pathway to get from the Nine Mile Creek Trail, which already does a little, you know, dog leg to get up to the promenade, to the point where people are just going to ride their bike across France Avenue. So, so I am concerned about that. If anything, I would say, I would almost like to propose that, you know, we make this the variance on the fourteen-foot height conditional on an easement from the bridge or tunnel to the Nine Mile Creek Trail, including an elevated crosswalk or table to make it safer for, for cyclists and pedestrians and make sure that they actually use the bridge or tunnel that we're building for them. So that's really my only concern with this project.
Okay, just quick question on, on that. I believe some of that property is outside of the, the bounds of this decision though, right? I mean, isn't this limited to just the site plan, right? So, I mean, I think that elevated crosswalk is technically part of the office.
Is that part of the seventy-two fifty?
I think it, isn't it, right? The, the landscape space then ties in.
What is the, can we get that? What's that?
West of the office building is not part of this project. I'm not sure exactly what area you're referring to.
Okay. Oh, so it's just literally the plot of the, so that was part of the, that whole trail and everything was part of the seventy-two fifty?
Yeah, and easements have been a state, there's already public easements over that space.
This is just Danila Plaza and the, the building, basically.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, again, that, that it's used. I mean, otherwise we're spending a huge amount of money for nothing. That's my only concern.
All right. Really good conversation. I learn every time I come here from fellow commissioners on the questions that we ask and from developers and how they present their information. I think just a couple of things. So the first one, you know, I'm certainly very sensitive to residents that live in a Cornelia neighborhood. This is one of the neighborhoods in the city that is very close to where a lot of the activity is happening. The Southdale area is expanding, it's growing, new development is coming in, and the folks who live in the Cornelia neighborhood are probably experiencing the brunt of these new developments. And so I'm very sensitive and appreciate all their concerns, what they have to go through, which is why I think any new development, it's wise for developers to get that buy-in from neighbors and residents, meet with them, share the ideas, share what they're trying to do and get as much feedback as possible. So I think this team did that and I appreciate that, and I think you guys have some more meetings coming up with residents. And so as transparent as you can be about what you're trying to do, the purpose, et cetera, would be super valuable and always have that available. You know, as a planning commission, we certainly have to, like tonight, you know, we don't have much leeway on what we could decide to do, right? And we try to stay as close as we can to the design experience guidelines for what, what to look at, right? And when we look at transitions, like Commissioner Miranda shared about, you know, these things are met and it's happening. You know, residents may not feel that, but we try to stick to what's on the paper, right? What's, what's for this space and how much yard it is, you know, from height and distance to the resident property and making sure that that transition makes sense. And I think this meets that. And so there's certainly some opportunities in the future as we do comprehensive plan updates to maybe revisit some of that. If folks are really feeling pinched that these buildings are too close to my house and it's too high, and that we have the opportunity to, to, to do that. And so, you know, certainly keep bringing it forward, but just want to share that I'm very sensitive to that, but we're trying to stick to what we're mandated to, to look at. With regards to this building, I think it's a very fine building. I think it meets all the requirements that we looked at the last time. Just a little bit concerned about the activation. Taking away the retail space and commercial, I think to reduce traffic and maybe from some cost concerns and maybe some, if you could even lease it out for that purpose, valid, right? But activation, I think, is going to be something that I'm not super sure we're going to see that, right? Like the pictures tell one thing. You look at the images, everyone looks happy, they're gathering, but why are they there? Right? Why am I coming to this spot? You know, what am I doing? I'm, you know, am I just moving through or am I actually lingering to do something fun, right? And that's kind of hard to do if there's nothing to attract someone into that space, right? If I want to have coffee with my friends, great, there's this south location that has a coffee shop, but am, am I going to walk all the way up north to the northern point of this property to drink that coffee? No, that would be done by the time I got there. And so thinking about how to keep that area activated and what actually turns out in reality is something that I'll be looking at. But that's always hard to predict sometimes. So that's one of my concerns. The height, right? So going from sixteen feet to fourteen feet, and good explanation, you guys answered all the questions, right? You answered all the questions, what's practical, you know, you could have ninety-five percent, let's say, of different uses in a space with a head clearance of eleven-point-five feet, you know? If you subtract away all the ductwork and all these kind of things, I think that makes practical sense, right? But we did say that too when it was sixteen feet, right? And we took it down to fourteen, and design guidelines say twenty. So it seems like we're going in this shorter direction, right? So maybe it's a question for the planning commission for us to think about, you know, how low is too low, right? Like if our next developer comes in and says, hey, you know, I can take this down to thirteen feet and we can still do everything, like, when are we going to say, ah, that doesn't make sense now, you know? So it's maybe something for us to think about. The key thing for me here was just the reference point of the other building that had it at fourteen feet and that worked out well, so I'm like, this probably would also work out well. So I think that got the pass for me. So I'm in favor. The last part, of course, is the connection with France. I think that's a big one. You know, I heard two different things. I heard, I think it was Ted, very confident that we'll do what we can, and I think I heard maybe, I think it was maybe Ari, if I'm not mistaken, kind of had like, ah, you know, we'll figure it out when we get there kind of thing. I think whatever the city does in approving this, just be really clear on if we do build a connection under France, that it's really clear who's responsible for what and how that's going to come together, right? To the resident who was talking earlier, right? The last thing that we want is a surprise to say, we didn't say that, we didn't say we were going to accommodate this bridge, like, you know, this kind of stuff. And then there's a fight and then costs and litigation and the city's in debt. Be really clear about, yes, it's not there today, but it might be there in the future. Design it in a way that it makes it bridge-ready or some kind of agreement that whatever path we take over or under, it could still flow through this site, right? And connect both sides. So just thinking about that ahead of time, so we don't get into a situation in the future. And, you know, I guess no pun intended, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there, right? So that's it.
Keep it short and sweet. I mean, I think the project's good for the city, especially if we're trying to make more housing, it makes Southdale a more dense district, and I think this project meets it, especially if our main criteria here is two feet on the ceiling height.
All right. I'll also try to stay concise as possible. I mean, I spent a lot of time going over this project in the last few days, and where I kind of ended up is that there is a big gap between where we are and where I wish we were. So let's start where we're at, right? So as I reiterated multiple times already, this P U D district was approved, you know, as function in October of twenty-twenty-two, right? And the apartment complex, hotel, retail element, you know, all those were allowed uses as part of the P U D. So I was not part of that discussion in twenty-twenty-two. So, I mean, there's really no, no recourse on that, that was made part of the P U D. You know, so I think a finding's a fact, and there's, again, there's no really, there's not a lot of discretion here in terms of do we say yes or no? Do we like it? It's not really relevant in this discussion. So it's, you know, from a legal standpoint for us to say, no, this doesn't meet the site plan or it doesn't conform with the overall development plan. I mean, I would think the developer would strongly disagree based on what the guidance that they received in October twenty-two, if we were to reject this, that we'd have any legal standing to do so or any really good standing to do so. So that's where we're at, right? So, you know, and I think now, so I go, get into where I wish we were. And a lot of that comes from discussion with residents over the last few days. So I've talked to Cornelia residents this earlier last week, and you could, you could hear it, the frustration from both Nora and Sandy in terms of where, what they understood the project was, where in the process the project was, what the timeline looked like, what discussions have already been had around impact to the community, traffic, you know, whether those discussions were actually had, right? I mean, you know, it's concerned that we didn't discuss those things. Well, to be fair, discussions were had in October of twenty-twenty-two, when this decision was ultimately made to rezone this to P U D. And at the time, I guess whoever was on the planning commission decided that the impact to the community, you know, was, I guess, you know, not a negative thing, traffic impacts would be negligible or, you know, be able to be handled, et cetera. But, you know, we were, so, so that, you know, that's, those discussions were had, right? I wish, I wish the, our residents perhaps understood that a little bit more. And I think we have an opportunity with the way that this is presented in Better Together Adina to provide a little bit more detail on the background of this project, right? So as I read through Better Together Adina before you got the packet, packet on Friday, I didn't really fully understand where we were either, right? And saying here, this development, maybe even a basic timeline in there, because again, it was really just, like, you know, I could see a resident understand, not being able to understand, has the apartment complex been approved yet? What really, you know, are we, are we discussing? Right? And then when residents see a hundred-and-sixty-seven-page packet that the planning commission gets, it's really hard from the parcel through that and try to understand that, right? So, you know, okay, again, where, where I wish we were. I wish we weren't at a point where we had this approval from twenty-twenty-two because we had two parcels. One was just kind of a box with not a lot of detail, and now we're getting here with detail. I think it made it, it made it hard for our planning commission maybe to discuss that. I don't, again, don't know what the discussion centered around, but I, I wish we hadn't maybe broke that up the way we had in terms of approving, you know, saying here in a couple of years, we'll come back to this phase two. Maybe the phase one, phase two approach is, is something that we could consider doing differently in the future. Lastly, you know, as far as the discussion around, again, again, where I wish we were, you know, if it were me in October twenty-twenty-two and I saw a six-story box, a hundred-and-fifty unit apartment building, I'm not sure that I would have agreed with that as far as the best use of land here. I understand the concerns from the residents about the transition zone. You know, it does say in page eighty-eight of the Southdale design guidelines that while much of the new housing in the area will likely be high-density multifamily, there should also be consideration of missing middle housing types, that is smaller-scale multifamily that provides a transition between single-family and high-density in terms of both housing market and built form. This may be particularly, this may particularly be appropriate in areas adjacent to existing low-density residential neighborhoods that border the greater Southdale district in some places. So I do much pushback against the fact that, or the sentiment that this isn't the right place for middle, missing middle or for other built forms of housing rather than six-story apartment building. And then we talked about the, the occupancy rate and how we need to build more apartments, right, in terms of the housing crisis. And, you know, I looked at, I looked up, I wanted to dig more, do more research into that and came across a article from Star Trib from March first of twenty-twenty-four talking about development in the Twin Cities metro area and how the Southwest District actually had the highest vacancy rate of all the metro suburbs markets and that the, the vacancy rate in our area had hit five-point-eight percent by the end of twenty-twenty-three, which was the highest vacancy rate among the six primary suburban markets by a significant margin. And then when we adjusted for buildings that had recently opened, the vacancy rate was seven-point-nine percent. And there, I guess it's considered to be an even balance between buyers and sellers when there's a five percent vacancy rate. And they showed a picture of Maison Green and talked about how they might have to start making concessions because the demand was soft. So we don't just have to just build apartment buildings in order to satisfy the demand for housing, and we need to consider where those apartment buildings are located and how that, that housing crisis is, is adjust, or is addressed. So again, that's where I wish where we were. I would think, I would hope that this would be different than the, I guess, what was already approved. I wish there was more of, so we've talked about the wow factor. I've lived in a U-shaped apartment building with a pool in the middle of the courtyard, and I don't think there's anything wow about it. And when we look at, again, the Southdale design guidelines, urban innovation design goal number seven talks about considering every new public and private introduction as an opportunity to explore the potential for the next significant invention or innovation, particularly where those actions enhance the experience of the district. Not sure this is a significant invention or innovation, so, you know, again, we're not there, wish we were, I wouldn't have approved this in October twenty-twenty-two, but here we are, and so my hands are fairly tied. And so that's the way, I mean, wish we were, here we are. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Thanks, Commissioner Borncie.
Yeah, thanks. So I actually have a clarifying question for Steph. I've been listening to all this and now I'm, now I'm confused about something, and I think me not being confused will kind of inform a very brief comment that I have. So is the question, so is the question that we're basically being asked, are we basically asked, being asked to answer, is the site plan consistent with the overall development plan that was approved previously?
Yes, that and the ordinance.
Yeah. And, and is that the question on which we don't have much discretion?
Correct.
And if the site plan's not consistent with the overall development plan that was approved, is, does that mean that we, we have to vote no? Like, is that, I'm trying to understand the discretion piece. Like if it's not consistent, are we bound to kind of vote no?
No, if you, if they came back with a completely different plan, but you liked it, you would still have the ability to say yes. You could say no also.
And whereas, everybody's sort of saying, well, it was approved already, so we don't have discretion, we have to say yes. We're like, I'm just trying to sort of understand where the hands are feeling like they're tied?
Yes, because we've established a zoning district for this site, so they're measured against those regulations for that district in addition to other, our other, you know, parking standards, those types of things. And they do, they, they meet the P U D ordinance and our other standards, with the exception of the first floor height.
This is kind of where I'm getting, so that the, the overall development plan that was approved contained a ten-thousand-square-foot retail element, right? This doesn't have that. So the question is, does this, is this proposal, is this site plan consistent with the overall development plan? And if it's missing a material element, how can I vote yes? Why don't I have to vote no? So is the question- So is the question just, is the use being proposed allowed in the PUD? Or is the question, is the site plan consistent with the development plan that was approved?
Yeah. One of the, the background items that were included in the resolution that was approved in 2023, the final document, said phase two would include a similar-sized building in height and square footage with the future use of housing, housing or hotel with or without retail. So it was contemplated either way.
Okay. So the overall development plan didn't admit the project to retail. It said it could have it and it could not have it.
Correct. It did mandate that they require the, to meet the affordable, you know, the 10% affordable housing, which they're also complying with.
Okay. Got it. Well, that instance, it seems like this is weird procedurally. You know, I think it would have been great if you guys could have come back for a sketch plan because like, you know, the retail component is kind of something that's important to some people. And, you know, it would have been good to have a conversation about that with or without retail, I guess, without retail complies with that. That's the one, the, I thought a lot of this is great, like what everybody else said, surrounding landscaping, awesome. Breaking the site up into smaller chunks, great connectivity, really good. Stormwater feature is actually nice. The terraces are, have potential positive. The one thing that, that I thought would have been better was to have a retail component because that space should, needs to be activated for all the, that pass-through space needs to be activated for all the reasons before talking about. And I'm not persuaded that by just having an apartment building without a retail component, it's going to be, even if there's a small coffee function or like a shared workout space or something with the commercial business. I just don't think it's going to be that activated. I think it'd be much more activated if it had a retail, retail component. I think the, so that's, that's my dig on it. That the rationale for not putting retail in this building was that it would reduce traffic demand. I don't think that's a compelling rationale for not putting retail into this location. Modest reduction in traffic in this area is, doesn't outweigh the benefits that activating a street level bring. And I think maybe there were other considerations that were actually driving the removal of the retail, like the ability to place more units on the ground level or other financial considerations. The property management lobby has been given a prominent position in a place where a retail component maybe would have been. But again, I don't think a property management office is going to activate the street level. I just haven't seen that happen really in any building. I don't think, I never see anybody going, like, like walking into the property management office. If anything, they look kind of empty and unused. So, so that's why, like, I think you guys can feel like the mix of, like, I think this is awesome. I think the density is great. I don't think a lot of the concerns about stepping back in the neighborhood are founded because it's separated for the landscaping feature. But having a, a more active use on the street level would have been, would have been good. So I'm not sure I'm going to vote. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for coming here. As for the site portion of this vote tonight, I am good with the site plan, with the buffer to the west and the water retention pond. And I like the fact that you're going to maintain it. I think that'll keep it looking good. I like Danila Plaza. I like how you thought through the parking and the sharing of the parking between the two spaces. I think that street is cleaner in the back. I like the sidewalk in the back. I like that it does kind of continue on. So I'm good with the site and I am good with the two-foot variance in terms of the height. I agree with Commissioner Miranda that density, especially in this area, is, is good with all the entertainment and the retail and the restaurants. Having more housing, I think, is fantastic. You know, this is also at the end of the E-line. And one of the ways we kind of limit, you know, additional vehicle miles traveled or VMT, like the carbon emissions, is, is getting residential, dense residential, close to bus lines. And that is going to be a fantastic bus line. I've said it before and I'll say it again. If I, I do ride the six bus when I get a chance. I have a car and I leave it at home once in a while. Or ride my bike and try and get out of it. So any, any opportunity we have of stop, of not getting in our cars is good. And because there's so much in this area, people can, if we figure out how people could walk safely across Savinou, this is good. So I do want to talk a little bit about this tunnel. When I see that image of going underneath and, and France just being this freeway for cars, it makes me anxious. I would rather have a stoplight on every block and get cars going slower. So I, I'm not too sure how, I'd rather see, I'd rather see solving that pedestrian issue in another, in another way. But that's not part of this project. And I also appreciate all the residents engaging and reading the design area guidelines and being part of the process. It is all an education process. So I'm good with this.
I agree with Commissioner Meriwether. The underground thing as a woman and just because it's under a highway makes me anxious. I'd rather have a stop sign. Similarly, with Commissioner Bornstein, if I was in charge of the world, I would have preferred retail. But I, I do hear that you listen to the neighbors and the neighbors complain about, on the traffic. And I think that's valid. I would challenge you as, for those of you who don't know, I'm a developer in my day job. I would challenge you to look into the occupancy. I don't think things are performing in real time the way that maybe the market and the data says they should. Anything built since 2019, Bauer being a perfect example, is closer to 60% occupancy. So maybe the market is saying what a dinah needs, and we need all kinds of more housing. But in this moment, maybe it's something other than luxury one and two bedrooms. Maybe we're getting more families. I love that you have outdoor access for each of your units, not all of your competitors do, and that you can have those dog owners walk right out. People are having dogs, not babies these days. So I think that that's really smartening of, of the time. I'm a little, I may have developed one of the projects that was shown tonight, that Cornelia Neighborhood is very passionate and involved about development. And I love that and respect that. They are going to be your biggest enemy and also your greatest ally. I really appreciate, I think Kevin's still sitting back there. Thank you for coming and understanding that the world is a bunch of pull and push and pull. And you don't get some of the wow, straight out the box. I mean, Centennial and, and all of that didn't happen in one development or in one vision or in one PUD. It was an evolution. And I'm having just a real hard time with the othering of people who live in apartments. They are a dinah residence. They deserve to be here as much as anyone else. They may not prioritize what some people do, which is single-family homes. And some of the comments from this whole discussion tonight really kind of rubbed me the wrong way. I think we have a housing crisis. People want to live here unless we're going to close our, you know, our doors and say, we don't want to expand as a city. The only way we expand is through more density on our otherwise landlocked city. So I commend you for engaging with the neighborhood. I hope you do more of that as an edina resident and as a developer. I hope you guys can go the extra mile and help educate everyone. Tiff is really complicated. I'm sure it's not how you're budgeting to pay for the storm sewer because you're not allowed to, but the average Joe doesn't know that. Traffic is hard to manage. And yes, I'm sure that apartment building has been empty for a really long time, but some actuary says traffic is going to be less. How we communicate those messages as a developer in our city is challenging. So I hope you can help all of us do that. I think you've done some incredible things here. Again, I'd like to say it's commendable to you guys that you're taking the time to work with the city on a possibility that's a sort of a no balls chance in hell of happening with going under France or over France. So that costs you time and money, and I appreciate you doing that because I think it can make, make the whole area better. I would have loved retail. That would have been my initial out-the-door option. But I'm going to vote enthusiastically yes for this.
All right, thank you. Sure, some comments. I, yeah, I pretty much echo support. It was a great presentation and what you guys are proposing is going to be very nice when it's there. It looks very nice. It's adding to the housing stock. I think all, a lot of the concerns that, I feel like, you know, most of the commissioners brought up and residents, you know, there, there are concerns that have been vetted back in 2022, honestly, minus something I'll get into later. You know, the transition to the neighborhood of the missing middle housing would have been perfect where that stormwater pond was, but like, that is fulfilling a different purpose for the site and kind of the neighboring area. And we did talk about that at length back in 2022. That would have been a perfect spot for said missing middle, which would have then created a nice transition to the taller building along France. But with that significant buffer, it's actually going to be pretty nice for residents walking up to France. It's going to add to, instead of walking by housing, you're going to have kind of like a nice, you know, park that you're walking by. And I remember people laughing when I was saying, hey, let's make a pleasant experience walking along France one day, you know, when I first started on the commission. But it's projects like these that need to keep setting the bar high. So what I see that I like a lot is when you just look at the site plan, there are a lot of sidewalks, a lot of design, a lot of, a lot of interesting components, a lot of landscaping, a lot of points of interest in that public realm that make it very nice. And I would say my only knock is, like, I feel like you're losing the potential to activate and use those spaces to the fullest. And my other knock is, I think strategically not doing the sketch plan review doesn't give you the best project because you lose all the feedback from us as well as residents and the council that you could otherwise incorporate, even if it's subtle tweaks. Those little things can mean a lot. And, I mean, you did that for the hotel. Like, that, that was allowed, so we saw a sketch plan for that. I think I would have expected to see a sketch plan for whatever you were going to do. So that would be my knock on it. Otherwise, I think it's going to be a great addition to the city. Just the lack of activation or retail there is something I'm struggling about because you have this awesome visibility along France. Lots of people are going to see what's there, and you have the potential to bring people there. But if it's just somewhere to live and work, people aren't going to go out of their way naturally to check it out. And maybe that's what you want and the residents want, and that's okay on that side of France. And I think that's what I'm, what I'm, I'm okay with, that balancing act, especially understanding the neighbors and kind of the layout of that block. You are going to be sending people west on 72nd. And the addition of the potential tunnel, I know you guys talked originally about potentially linking these buildings, you know, the garages where you could share use that way. And obviously, that's off the table if there's a tunnel going through there. I, I personally think if that did go through there, it would ruin your site in way more ways than it benefits your site. And so I'm concerned about just the cost and expense to do something that potentially ruins two different awesome projects where we could settle for maybe a more aggressive at-grade crossing. So just want to get that out there. I support your site, where it is, how it is. I think if a tunnel cut through there and lowered that grade 20 feet, it's not, what's Danila Plaza anymore? You know, bridges across. I don't think any of us would like to see that. So that's, yeah, bridge will cross when we get there. But thank you so much. I think I'll welcome a motion unless there's any other questions or comments.
Motion to recommend the city council approve the site plan and ordinance amendment.
Second. Let's just do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Alkire.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Aye.
Commissioner Felton.
Aye.
Commissioner Honneman.
Aye.
Chair Bennett.
Aye. Well, I guess I didn't need to do that. All right. Motion carries. Great. Good luck with your project and wish you best for you guys. If there's any tweaks you can make between now and city council that benefit this mutually, I'd encourage you to do so. And hope you have a great night. Thank you, guys. All right. So thankfully, Commissioner Miranda postponed the reports and recommendations. He knew this was going to happen. Yeah, all right. Usually stuff along France is the subject of late nights. I mean, most of them have gone late and rightfully so. These are big projects that have big change written all over them. So turn it over to Chair and member comments.
So, yeah, let me just talk about potential areas of change real quickly. So we made a lot of progress in the last 24 hours. I was hoping to jumpstart it by putting it on the calendar. And, but we didn't get to the, to the finish line with that or whatever. So I don't want to have a, a meeting where we're spending hours with everybody picking apart everything, whatever. We need to come to a decision amongst ourselves, present the plan to you guys, ask for your feedback and modify it. So rather than, like, everyone do it together. The whole point of having a committee is to do that. So, so I'm going to push really hard to make sure that all of us participate in that, make sure that gets done for the next meeting. In terms of the Lincoln and London area, small area plan.
Lou, sorry, could you, I guess, could you explain for the rest of us and whoever's doing it, what are you delivering?
We are delivering, well, I could read it. Well, we are delivering a list of areas that are likely to change or have the potential to change. And we're delivering a prioritized list, which we're going to do rather than numbered one through 10 or whatever, we're going to say, you know, near term, medium term, long term, just to make it easier. And because their order could change for a variety of reasons. And then a list of, you know, names of these regions and their boundaries, approximate boundaries. We're not going to get too specific because that's what a project itself is for. And then the rationale, the, the city policies and plans that make, that drive our decision to show these particular places as areas of change. So to be clear here, you know, and I think I mentioned this last time, but, you know, we're, we're not talking about, you know, upzoning the entire city to 20-story towers or anything. We're not even talking about upzoning the entire, the entire city. So we're talking about specific areas of the city, most of which are, basically all of which are commercial already. And so, but guiding both from developer interests, city plans and policies, the, the comprehensive plan, the climate action plan, you know, all these things build into, okay, developer interest, you know, all these things build into what we want to study in the future. So, so we have our, you know, our five small area plans and then the big Southdale area. But there are smaller areas that we think, you know, would need a little bit of interest.
I guess what I was asking, you know, we had that student presentation out of nowhere that seemed to kind of like deliver a lot of parallels. I'm sure that we'll see. But what was nice about it is just like the visual, like, understanding and reacting versus a list. And then just when I was thinking of, when I've been thinking about this, I just, I want to just get other feedback too before it's presented to like it, you know, because we want this to be good to act upon. One thing that, what the students did that I thought was nice as I was thinking more about it was it allowed you to also fill in between and see like, maybe not, not all of these small areas as like disparate, unique, isolated areas. Like you mentioned, you know, like, how do these connect to the bicycle plan, the pedestrian plan, the, the regional network? And so I, I don't know, like, if it's with it or maybe in concert with it, you know, how they perceive kind of corridors of change. And you've mentioned that too. But thinking, you know, of like this isolated area by this one, and it's connected in certain ways that people get to and fro. ways that people get to and fro, it seems like there, there'd be a lot of benefit with any kind of synergy that happens with change, you know? And it just got me thinking of like, you know, if we're talking about these areas, I think we need to also talk about what connects them. And is that?
Sure.
Is that part of it or is it going to be visualized at least?
Give it away, all our secrets.
All right, sorry.
I'm not going to have anything to announce. But yeah, I mean, we're, we're incorporating, we've incorporated two corridors, which the city, you know, the city has small area plans, but no, no concept of corridors. And other cities have concepts of corridors. And again, to give it away, but it's, you know, we're not doing anything like radical, okay? So France clearly is a corridor. We're getting BRT transit on it. It's coming next year. It'll be ready next year. So we kind of need to think about that, right? So that's a corridor that connects Southdale, 50th and France, 44th and France.
Okay, I'll just be quiet. I'll be quiet.
No, no, no. So that's a north-south corridor, and well, you need an east-west corridor, right? And something other than a freeway. And so Vernon is the obvious example for that, and that's another thing that we'll be talking about. And we do plan, you know, it's, it's a take, so the, one of the things we were struggling with when we talked to Addison about this is, you know, what, what do we present, you know? So the city has a template for what you present, but we have all these ideas. Commissioner Day, Commissioner Felton, and Commissioner?
Ian.
But Ian, thank you. She's not here. And all wrote, and I, you know, wrote something about the projects that we were assigned to, whatever. So we will have an appendix that will have more detail.
Okay.
Stuff, okay? So it's not just going to be like a table. We do have a table. We're going to have a map. We're going to have textual descriptions, you know? So we're going to have a, we're going to have a story.
Okay, good. It's open map versus like meats and bones.
Yeah, no, no, no. And that's the thing, we don't really have that today. We have the parts to it, but it's not all written as one cohesive thing, which is my job and I'll be doing. But we, we didn't have necessarily agreement on everything, or at least.
Sure.
We didn't know if we had agreement or not. But I think we do, and so it's just a matter of getting that all out.
Thank you.
So, yes. And then, so Lincoln and London area, where was I? So we have another committee meeting tomorrow night. We, we have an internal meeting tomorrow morning and then a, that I attend, and then a, a group meeting tomorrow night, which will be our third meeting. And then actually, I would ask Commissioners Felton Day, what, we also had pop-ups, three pop-ups where we try to interact more with the community with people who didn't attend previous meetings that we had. So if you guys have any comments on what you thought the experience was, whether we reached out to the proper people, you know, any feedback you guys have would be really nice to have, if you, if you have any.
Sure. As far as the pop-ups go, I was at one. Mary, whether you were at all three, I think? Yeah. So at least my experience with the pop-up that we had at Walnut Ridge Park was very positive. And we talked to maybe 20, 30 people. I, I think we gave a few postcards to some parents that were watching over their kids playing soccer, so they didn't really want to be bothered by us. So we just said, hey, just let you know. But it was informative. There was a lot of people that stopped by and said, you know, thanks, thanks for doing this. We appreciate you guys being out here. We just had a lot of good constructive dialogue and basically we took down a lot of ideas and feedback from residents and then collected them at the end. So, but it was a good opportunity.
You know, and I think this is all, for me, it's talking with community and kind of understanding community and kind of learning about your city and learning about your neighborhoods and learning about how this all works. You know, I, I participated just as a resident on two. I had two very different experiences on both of those. And, and I think it's, it is, it is, it is a two-way street. It is us learning about how the city works. It is us learning about how community works. It's us learning how, about how planning works, and it is sharing that information and talking to people about that. So it's good whenever we interact with the public.
Great. So, yeah, so I think it was, it was a great thing that the consultants came up with as a way to reach out to residents that we couldn't normally reach out to. So I think, I think it worked out pretty well. So, and then my final thing isn't related to any particular thing, but yeah, we just have the two hottest days on the planet ever. So, I mean, I don't know. I'm worried. I mean, nobody else seems to be worried, but I'm worried and I just, I just think we need to do a lot of change. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to jump in with something. So, you know, typically, planning commission is a common springboard to city council. So there is one of us that is about to throw their hat into the ring. And I just want to give them a minute or two to just maybe speak about it and wish them the best of luck. Commissioner Day.
Thanks. I didn't ask for that, by the way.
That's, I know you wouldn't have taken it, so.
No, no. All right. I mean, I'll just keep it brief. I, you know, it's, why am I running? Well, you know, I, when I first joined the planning commission, it was like drinking from a fire hose. I mean, I honestly had, felt way overwhelmed, feeling less so overwhelmed these days. But really, I mean, I just really fell in, in love with the process and really, you know, areas I thought we could improve. I'm an engineer. I guess my brain just works that way. I'm thinking, here's what we have, here's opportunity for improvement. And, you know, I moved to Edina in 2021 with my wife, and we bought our, our first home here. It's going to be home for the foreseeable future, and I want to have a voice and shape in the community. I love Edina. I don't think this needs to be, you know, I was talking with the residents about this the other day, and they're saying, well, you know, too often in, in city council campaigns, people nitpick on what they don't like about Edina and focus on all the negatives, right? There's a ton positive things about Edina. I wouldn't have set, we wouldn't have settled down here if we didn't love Edina, didn't love the city, right? Edina doesn't have to be overhauled, just refined, and we all have a different ideas of what that means. But we're in a great place to live already, so there's no negativity with this and anything in that, in that regard, me saying, you know, oh my gosh, I think we need to tear it all down and build it back up. But obviously, there's things I think we can do better and, yeah, we can address those small gaps, but Edina's a wonderful place to live, and I'm looking forward to talking to more and more residents. It's already been an extremely good learning opportunity.
Great. And then it sounds like Carolyn Jackson and James, they're, they're going to run also, so it'll be a, a good, good battle of the wits. But it's nice to see other planning commissioners, you know, taking that leap like Kate Agnew did. She's now in the city council too, so figured I'd share that. It's fun news. Is anyone else going to throw their hat in the ring I don't know about? All right. Well, if so, best of luck to you and, oh, Carrie? Moving to Edina.
The final filing date is August 13th, so we won't know anything for sure until then. But I had two, two quick comments.
All right.
Or one, one's a question first and then a comment. So I, I wanted to touch back on what Claire said about the process tonight and othering of renters and what exactly that means in terms of what we discussed tonight. Because I can understand some of the Better Together Edina feedback, right? Talked about not wanting more transient residents in Edina. That's a very deliberate and negative thing to say against renters. But as far as the discussion amongst the commission tonight, I'm not sure where that came from.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I guess I don't feel like this is the appropriate place to necessarily respond, but we talk a lot about density and the bad thing that is density, and then we have these goals of providing more housing, and we have climate action plans which say we need more density. So it's, I think it's important for us to remember that even the oldest parts of Edina had multifamily housing, and the, the missing middle isn't just missing single-family middle. And more than 75% of our city is dedicated to that exclusive use, and it often comes at a, it is ranked as the highest and most important use that we need to preserve. And so when we talk about areas of change and development projects, we often, I think lose sight of the fact that some of the reasons for the comp plan, for zoning, for some of those larger strategic things are that they are social goods that we as a city need. And just because an individual or a group of individual residents of today in Edina don't like it, that I think that's doing a disservice to our job because they could move tomorrow, and here we have made a decision based on voices of, of a, of a minority of, of people. And I think we have to remind ourselves of, of the tyranny of the minority because we in Edina have a very long, convoluted, expensive plan for development, for any kind of development. It, it takes a lot of money, a lot of equity, a lot of stamina to get through our process, PUD or otherwise. And I think if we don't respect how much effort those people are bringing to the table, then we aren't respecting the people who are trying to make our community and bring us those social goods. We're just doing a disservice. So that, that's the position that I come from. I'm obviously a little passionate because that's what I do for a living, but whether it's traffic, whether it's they, they don't, we don't want them in our neighborhood, like that's, I mean, it's all coded language. Our schools are going to be overrun. Our, our roads are going to be, it's, it's coded language for, I don't want people who have different values for me or different lifestyles for me. And if, if that's what the city really believes, then I think we're doing a disservice to our history, which has always been more open, more inclusive, and had a variety of individuals be present. And so, yeah, that, that's, I think, what I have to say.
Yeah. Extremely well said. I 100% agree. I just, you know, I just worry sometimes about when we talk about, when we debate individual projects on their individual merits, that those in, that, those, I'm allowed to keep speaking, that those, that those, that, those that oppose, right, are potentially, you know, painted in a negative light simply, you know, they don't want to see others, they don't like afford, like they're against affordable housing or so on and so forth. It's just, I mean, it also becomes, right, so it's the characterization of that individual pushback sometimes. I don't want that to get mischaracterized as people just saying that they just don't want certain people of a certain type or certain background or anything in the community. We debate projects and say, do we think this development in this specific area based on the comp plan is appropriate? And, I mean, I think those are good discussions to have, and it doesn't come from a bad, a bad place or deep-seated place or anything by a lot of people.
Regularly in this.
Okay, go ahead.
One of the reasons we had the pop-up at the load-in is because renters do not show up. We don't get feedback from renters. So we went there and spent two hours, and we had to go out on the pool deck and approach them individually because they did not come to the pop-up.
Oh, jeez.
And they pay taxes and they vote, and they are residents of Edina.
Yeah. So, I mean, so the follow-up to the question was, was really going to be, so I, I think we can just do better.
Are you campaigning versus planning?
What's that?
Planning or campaigning?
Planning, I'm not campaigning. So talking about planning, right, so that really just the, the development review process. So when we talk about the people that come back and speak strongly against the process, right, I think sometimes that comes from just their misunderstanding of what's going on, and they just don't feel informed or they feel left out. Right, so our comprehensive plan, we, we talk about the development review process is often a place where public comes most contact with land use guidance at the city level, and educational elements to help inform the development review process can build public knowledge and improve outcomes. So we can improve, I think, our outcomes and improve the dialogue in the city if people feel more informed. And I think that's just ultimately, I asked the question because I wanted to get to this point, to say, you know, with the discussion we had tonight with some of the residents is because they didn't feel, they were so, felt really confused, felt really frustrated. And I don't think it came from, I just really hate this project, but they felt frustrated by it. And so I think we just have an opportunity to be more transparent and democratic and stuff with people. And we've talked about this on the planning commission plenty of times, right, in terms of, we got the development review map on Better Together Edina. This particular summary of this project could have used a timeline potentially. And so I just, you know, as in clarifying before we did community comment, what are we actually voting on, right? This is an important step. So that's all I was really trying to get at, is I think we can get better dialogue, more constructive dialogue, and erase some of that animosity if we make sure that we're very clear in what we're doing, and the city is very deliberate in that.
I know it's late, and I know we have to go, but I did promise someone to make a mention. So I want to give a lot of kudos to Officer Darren Davis, Edina PD. We had like a community get-together a few weeks ago, and he came out. He's championing this idea where after one year of service, if officers could get one week of just PTO time, just time to be home with their families. It's a very stressful job being a police officer, and so he's trying to champion this idea. I think he has all the paperwork together. He wants to get it in front of city councils. I hope that city council gets to see this. I told him I would bring it up in my planning commission meeting. I think it's a very wonderful idea. He's expecting his, I think, second child pretty soon here, and he's like, Quincy Matt, I would love to just be home for one little time, just to kind of hang out and just be dad, but it's a very busy job. So just wanted to give him some, some props and share this with the city council if they ever watch this, that he's trying to push this idea, and I think it's a great one.
That's great. Any other comments?
Just a reminder for the work session, August 14th, and I'll work through with Chair Bennett on the topics. We know one topic for sure is the cannabis issue that is coming forward. We have to have an ordinance in place by the end of this year, so we'll discuss that. So more to come on the work session.
All right, well, we all know the last item of business.
Motion closed.
A second, anyone?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. So move. The meeting has been adjourned. Thank you all.